Enter the studio.
We should press the transition now?
Hmm?
Should we press the transition?
Yeah, probably you want to have it five minutes before you walk up.
I know, so I'm sure we're in here. I'm just like trying to...
If anything was doing painful stuff, I'll go open my phone to myself and then it should be like two minutes and then I'm coming up.
You don't have that thing of extra, nothing.
That it. Is it? Good morning. How are you? Good to see you. It's starting.
Hey, we are now live on YouTube, so we can begin.
Alrighty, good morning, and welcome to our Queensborough President's tidbit land use public hearing. This hearing is taking place both in person in room 200 at Queensborough Hall and on our YouTube channel at queensbp.org. I am Queensborough President Donovan Richards, and I will be chairing this land use public hearing. For those who wish to testify virtually and haven't already pre-registered to do so, please visit our website at queensbp.nyc.gov. If you are attending our public hearing in person, please see our staff to sign up for public speaking time if you have not already done so. Please note, your opportunity to speak will follow those that who are pre-registered. Written testimony is welcome from those who are unable to testify in real time. All written testimony must be received by 5:00 PM today and may be submitted by email to planning, to e- by email to planning2@queensbp.nyc.gov. Planning2@queensbp.nyc.gov or by conventional mail sent to the office of the Queensborough President at 120-55 Queens Boulevard, Room 226Q Gardens New York, 11424. Once again, 120-55 Queens Boulevard, Room 226Q Gardens New York, 11424. Now I will turn it over to Lisa.
She's on.
Oh, she's on too, okay, to please review how this public hearing will proceed.
Good morning. The public hearing shall be conducted in the following manner. The applicant will be called to give a description of the requested zoning action and the proposed project and respond to any questions solely from the chair. The floor will then be open for public speakers. Please listen for your name to be called. Each speaker will have three minutes. A signal will be heard and notice will be displayed when the three minutes have passed. When you are called, please identify yourself for the record, and if you are formally speaking as a representative or member of a group, the calendar number or application you are speaking about, and whether you are for or against the item. Then you may begin your testimony. At the discretion of the chair, if there are a large number of speakers on any particular item, it may be put on second call. Speakers for and against that item may also be called to testify in an alternating basis. Please note that if you are testifying virtually, you may keep your camera, you must keep your camera on during your testimony and display your name accurately on YouTube, on Zoom. If at any point you have any technical issues, please let our staff know in the chat and we will assist you. Thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you, Lisa, and once again, the chair reserves the right to ask speakers for clarifications or further information regarding the application or comments. Please note that any member of the public who disrupts this public hearing will be asked to leave this room. Now, we haven't had any experience in having to do that since I've been borough president, so we just ask everybody to remain respectful, no matter what your opinion is. I will now turn it over to Lisa to please call the first calendar item.
Calendar items number one and two are related items. ULP numbers 250046ZMQ and ULP number 250047MMQ. The applicant is Queens Future LLC. Affected community boards number 3, 4, 6, 7, 8, and 9. Applicant team, you may begin your testimony.
Borough President, we really appreciate the time and attention. It has been an extraordinary experience going before community boards.
Really enjoyed the interaction, tremendous questions, great input for us. It's really been a wonderful process, so it's an honor to be before you. For those in the room who don't know me, I'm Mike Sullivan Sully, I'm Steve Cohen's Chief of Staff. I've been with Steve for 17 years, and he's asked me to lead this project that we're about to present. I'm going to give you a brief overview of the project, history of the site. I'm going to ask you Lisa Ferreras Copeland to present on our community engagement to date. I'm going to ask our architect, Queens native Greg Pascarelli from Shop Architecture to present the design of the project and the specifics of the zoning actions that were requesting. And finally, I'll finish up with the community benefit and public realm elements that are a part of this project. The, the adventure of this great project began literally from the first day of my boss Steve Cohen buying the New York Mets. Against my better wishes and advice, he got on Twitter from that first day of owning the team and having it as opening day press conference. And on Twitter and from Mets fans and from our community members, he got a lot of input about the things that people wanted to see changed at Citi Field. Not just players on the field and winning World Series, but physical things they wanted to see happen at the ballpark. Bringing back black jerseys on Friday nights, celebrating Mets history, retiring numbers, bringing back old timers game. We've been able to do a tremendous amount at Citi Field in the last four years. But there was one item that we heard over and over again from our neighbors, and that was the area around Citi Field that is desolate, especially in the winter time. There's not fun things to be able to do immediately after, before and after games. A day at the ballpark is not a day at the ballpark, it's two hours and 40 minutes at the ballpark. People want green space, live music, entertainment. One of the great things about our Mets fans and our seven line army that takes our fans to travel all over the country to see the Mets fan play is we have that support all over the country. The problem is, they go to St. Louis, they go to Battery in Atlanta, they go to all these great ballparks around the country, and then they come back and they say, "Why can't we have something beautiful around Citi Field like we see in these other cities? Live music, entertainment, bars, restaurants, fun things to do, beautiful green open space." The bottom line of the project that we're going to present to you today is a proposal to take the 50 acres of asphalt parking lots around Citi Field, to take half of the land and transform it into a brand new 25 acre New York City Public Park that we are offering to build to Parks Department specifications, to maintain long-term to Parks Department specifications, and provide public safety in. And we're going to propose to take the other half of the land to create an entertainment destination. Hotel, gaming, live music, 5,000 seat indoor concert hall, 100,000 square feet of conference and meeting space, bars, restaurants, fun things to do before and after games, a Taste of Queens Food Hall. Transform the area around Citi Field and tie together the tennis, the soccer stadium, which we were excited to see, shovels and go in the ground on yesterday, and obviously baseball. The opportunity, the pay for for this project is the gaming licenses that the state authorized by state referendum back in 2013. What we're proposing to do is to take one of these licenses, we're going to compete for it, and use it as the pay for to completely transform the area around Citi Field. It was a public referendum to approve those licenses. The people of Queens voted at a 64% rate to support those licenses, and they're now going to be handed out at the end of next year. The zoning and mapping actions that Greg will review with you are basically what we need to do is the next step in our process to allow us to move forward in bidding. We have to do an EIS, a ULP. The gaming related aspects of this project get debated next summer through a CAC process. The Borough President has a seat, we have six members of that committee. We will be presenting an RFA with all the details of the project at the end of next June. They'll have fly-through videos, every get, thing gets posted publicly, and then there'll be public hearings here in the, here in Queens on the project, where ultimately we need to have a positive vote for the project to advance. It would then go to Location Siting Board at the end of next year, and ultimately the state has said they're going to issue the licenses at the end of next year. When I talk about the opportunity and the challenge, I'm talking about the area inside the yellow dotted lines. It's the 50 acres of asphalt parking lots around Citi Field. We've struck a partnership to pursue this project. We partnered with Hard Rock Entertainment. We picked Hard Rock for a reason. Hard Rock does live music better than anybody. They do over 30,000 live music events around the world every year. Live music, as we've studied the great ballpark villages around the country, is a critical part of making projects like this around sports facilities successful. People love to hear live music before and after games. Jim Allen, the CEO of Hard Rock, has delivered major projects like the one we're proposing on time and on budget. Having an experienced partner like Jim was incredibly, incredibly important to us. We also have other equity partners in the project. I believe both of them are here with us this morning, Cheryl McKissick, our former controller Bill Thompson, and Henry Cisneros. We're honored to have them as part of the team, not only helping us to advance the project in terms of MWBE and local hiring in terms of the financing of the project, but also has equity partners in this project. This is an all-New York based design and development team. It was really important to Steve that whatever we built next to Citi Field looked like it belonged in Queens. You'll meet Greg in a minute, who was born here, his firm is based in New York. We have James Corner Field Ops, again, a New York based landscape architectural firm. They've done the High Line, they've done a lot of the great iconic New York City Public Parks. They've done beautiful work, which you're about to see, and it's an all-New York based team. I have presented the overview of the project about six, seven months ago. That's the slide you see here today. It outlines the location of the various, various aspects of the project. I'm not going to go through all of them right now. When Greg shows you the renderings, you'll be able to see each detail of the project. One of the things I did want to point out is that we are offering as part of this project to completely transform our seven line train station. For those of you who frequent it, you know it's not ADA accessible, which means for families with strollers, it's very difficult to get from the platform down to the field level. We want it to be beautiful. When those subway doors open, we want it to be the entrance, the point of arrival for this beautiful new facility for soccer, for the new neighborhood to our east, the new 2,500 units of affordable housing next door, and the new school. The history of the site is fascinating, I'll go through it quickly. The reason I'm going through it is it's really important to the public policy issues that we're about to discuss in terms of the zoning actions. You go all the way back in history to the 1850s, the entire area around us was a swamp. The red out, red outline is our 63 acres. You see, there's a small island across the street from what, where Citi Field is today. That island, Yonkers Island, was a stopping point for slaves coming north as part of the Underground Railroad. Those slaves were later housed in the Bound House in downtown Flushing by the Quakers. Fascinating history, literally right across the street from Citi Field and where the soccer field is going in today. Fast forward to the early teens, we had coal-fired furnaces all over the city of New York. They needed a place to dump the ash, and an entrepreneurial developer bought the swamp and created an ash dump on our site, and this is what it looked like. You can see the bulldozers at this point have filled in most of the swamp. This is now a 1924 aerial photo. As those bulldozers are pushing the ash out into the dump, the breeze is blowing off the Flushing Bay, and it's blowing that ash up into the air, leads to the famous line in The Great Gatsby, "The Valley of Ashes." F. Scott Fitzgerald is talking about our site. He's talking about coming through the little toll road across the street from us. I'm now fast forwarding to 26, construction for the trellis on the Corona line has begun, which we of course now affectionately refer to as our seven line. You can see most of the swampy areas have been filled in this, at this point. I'm now coming to the critical moment in terms of the public policy question surrounding our site. Robert Moses is Parks Commissioner. He's determining where he wants to build the First World's Fair. He's determining how to get cars to the First World's Fair, where to build the parking lots for First World's Fair. And what does he do? He does what he always did. He looked at black and immigrant neighborhoods as locations to bring in highways. This is the residential security map he used, and you can see at that time we have thriving black and immigrant neighborhoods to our west and east in East Elmhurst, Corona and Flushing. I'm now fast forwarding to the early 30s. This is a memo, this is the key memo, if I can leave you with one thought, this is why our land is mapped and zoned today the way it is. Robert Moses is Parks Commissioner, he's writing to the World's Fair Committee. He's saying, "I've located the place I want to build the First World's Fair," as the site just below us in the Flushing Meadows Park. And now he needs to find a place to build the parking lots, and he proposes purchasing for $673,000 Dagnan's Ash Dump, the site that we're on today. He gets the money, he asks for another $500,000 to grade and fill the land, he gets it, he does it. Again, our 63 acres are inside the red dotted lines. You can see the land has been completely graded and filled now, and he's successful in building his parking lot, and this is what it looked like. I think this is an amazing photo. You can see the World's Fair buildings in the top third of the screen, and you can see our site inside the red dotted line is all a giant parking lot. Post-World's Fair, our site became a dump again. They dumped all the temporary buildings from the World's Fair there. After a year or two, they cleaned it up and created a free commuter parking lot, free parking ride for the people of Queens to commute into Manhattan, and this is what it looked like. Moses then needs to figure out a place for the new baseball team, the New York Mets and the Jets to play, and he proposes our site. He goes to the legislature in 1961 and he passes a bill to alienate the land. Why did he need to alienate the land? Because he bought it using his, using his authority as Parks Commissioner. So while our land has never been an actual park, it's mapped and zoned as parkland because Moses bought it using his authority as Parks Commissioner to build the parking lots for the First World's Fair. Legislature votes to alienate the land to create a commercial enclave to provide for the construction of Shea Stadium. And then in 07, 08, we just flip-flopped the location of Citi Field in Shea. The bottom line here, the thought I want to leave you with here is today this land is still technically mapped and zoned as parkland, even though there's never been an actual park here. But for the first time in history, we have the opportunity to undo the wrongs of Robert Moses and actually build a real New York City Public Park, a 25 acre park, playgrounds, ballfields and ballcourts for the neighborhoods around us as part of this project. With that, I'm going to turn it to you Lisa to take you through the community engagement, the input we heard, and then Greg will show you how we turned that input into a beautiful project. Thanks, Julissa.
Good morning, Borough President, and to all of those that are here, as Sully mentioned, I'm Julissa Ferreras Copeland, and I have had the wonderful opportunity of leading community engagement and GR for this project. When Sully and the team reached out, they expressed, and we had conversations about doing this community engagement work, and we understood that from the beginning, we would engage the community from the ground up, understanding that this approach had to be one that was inclusive of the diversity of our community and the many voices. And I hope that you'll see that as we go through this presentation. The community engagement originally focused on the closest neighborhoods of Corona, East Elmhurst, Flushing and Jackson Heights. It was a engagement that was done through diversity, not just in how we made, made sure to communicate to the constituents and to the neighbors, but also in how we took the approach. It was, you know, Pastor Young's based church, and it was a small group of about 40 people, and we engaged for three and a half hours or a much larger setup, which you'll see here in these images, at Citi Field with several hundred people coming through so that we can ensure that we heard as many voices as possible in the process. Part of this was that we needed to be open to the public and transparent, and, you know, we were able to do that, making sure that this was communicated through in the press and multiple languages as we invited the community to come in. What our public engagement essentially looks like is four years of community input, over 1,000 meetings with community leaders and 16 community workshops, totaling the outreach and listening to the voices and getting opinions from over 1,800 residents that have attended. Part of the community engagement, you also understand that it didn't end. We continue to have conversations, and I often say many of you have Sully's personal cellphone number because of those engagements. That engagement was not just about how we faced forward or how we engage with the community, but also how this project communicated within the different verticals. And here you'll see the chairman of Hard Rock and Steve Cohen engaging with community, and that was very important so that all of our teams, from the architectural teams, our legal team, understood that the community's voice was very important as we developed this project. After hearing for four years, I just wanted to share a little bit of what we heard. The top two things that we heard is our community wants expanded open space. They also want a per, a project that creates jobs. A climate-ready location, one that supports local and MWBE businesses was very important, and we heard that because many of the neighbors in this, around Citi Field also felt the impacts of LaGuardia's redevelopment. 365-day use came up in every single session. And how did we hear that? We heard that by people expressing that if you go to Citi Field outside of a game, it's dark, it's desolate, and there's nothing to do. They want to see activation around this space that's 365 days, not just when there is a tennis match or when there's a baseball game or in the future when there's a soccer game. Community input was very important, not just for the four years that we've been engaging with the community, but that this project will continue to communicate and engage with the community throughout the entire process. Athletic fields and bike paths came up in many of the conversations because people just don't want grass, you know, and, and somewhere to come and lay out and enjoy the sun. Our, what we heard from a lot of families, moms in particular, was that they want to have a space to take their children, to burn some energy, to use the playgrounds, to be able to engage with basketball and of running track, bike paths that are safe and protected. Access to the waterfront was also very important, in particular to communities like East Elmhurst, where there is a connection from East Elmhurst through the promenade to the park. Currently, if you're at the Unisphere, you're not able to connect from the Unisphere to the waterfront. And that really is the original intention, and our architect will walk you through that, is to really connect someone that is enjoying the park or the Unisphere to be able to connect through a park into the, to the promenade. We heard it, we heard hotel with casino and live music venue. Many families felt that, you know, why do I have to go to Manhattan to be able to enjoy live music, entertainment? They want to be able to have those opportunities here in a facility that they can be proud of, but also listen to great concerts that right now you can only enjoy in Manhattan. And bars and restaurants came up a lot, especially amongst the Met fans, because they want to do something before and after games. This board right here is a board that we had at Citi Field. We actually had it at all of our sessions, but this one in particular was at Citi Field. I happened to be walking by the woman who put that dot right in that middle where that line is. And I asked her, I said, "You know, you're killing me. Why would you put that dot right in the middle? What is it, what do you mean by this?" And she says, "I like everything that you guys want to build. However, I am concerned that this will take away the tailgating at Citi Field." And why this is important is that after this, we always had our debriefs, and Sully immediately, when I brought this up, immediately called the architect and said, "Hey, guys, we need to make sure that we are addressing this concern." And I give this example because this was one woman's voice, but that one woman's voice made a huge impact on this project because we understood that her voice represented many. And you'll see in this project that every, a lot of communities, all the community interests were reflected in the design of this plan. Part of this was the framework, so we took all those pillars, what we call pillars of what we heard, and we went out to the community because we understand that meeting with community organizations and meeting with leaders is very important. However, meeting the community where they are, and that is at their door, is also important. We knocked on over 40,000 doors, collected over 20,000 signatures in favor of this project, and 87% of the residents signed our petition in favor of this project and also gave us their address and their email to remain in contact. I don't know how many of you guys, you get a knock on the door and you'll give them your email and your address and your phone number. I don't think that happens often in New York City. But in this project, it was very important, people wanted to remain connected, they wanted to know more about the jobs when the, this program was going to build out, and this is a heat map that reflects that. Community voices have been a very important part. It is part of the fabric and the foundation of the work that we've done, and here you'll see many of our champions, many of which will testify today in favor of this project. I have to give a shout out to our colleague Borough President Costa Constantinidis, who also had helped us through this project, and I know he's in the room. I shouldn't start shouting out people because there's a lot of great, wonderful people in the room today. But this work really allowed for us to be able to share what the community heard and give it to one of the best architects in New York City. And Greg took all this, Greg Pascarelli took all this, and you'll see what a wonderful job he did.
Thank you, Julissa. Thank you Borough President for holding us this morning. My name is Greg Pascarelli, I'm one of the founding principals of Shop Architects here in New York. I'm honored to be here, and I'm honored to work with the, the Mets and Hard Rock on this incredible project. As Sully said, I was, I was born here. The hospital is right down the road here on the Grand Central Parkway, could almost see it. I grew up playing in Flushing Meadows, Corona Park. I'm a committed New Yorker and a very proud of the work that we've done around, around New York City. And when we were, when we were approached to think about this project, I've always thought the same things. The stadium is not connected to the city, it's, it's desolate, and what are the things that we could do to fix it? And what a great challenge for us to think about how to make a solution like that. So, you know, we knew the history of Robert Moses very, very closely. And as Sully said before, it really came down to this moment, knowing how on the left you could see the original plan where you could see the park wanted to go to the waterfront. But then Moses, as he always did, would create it into parkland and then jam freeways and highways and expressways through the, through the property, severing the community from the park. And you could see by the 60s with Shea Stadium and then tennis in there and the highways all the way around, it completely separated the community from the park. And so the first thing we thought of was, how many times do you have that opportunity to right the wrongs of Robert Moses? And that was the driver behind every single move that we did. That and what the community wanted and how we could incorporate it to fix this part of the city. So the, the gestural idea was, there's a lot of natural beauty, there's a lot of architectural history, and then there's this park, and we just said, "How do we drive the park through to get to the waterfront? And how do we fix the east-west connection so that the community feels welcomed and can reconnected into this part of the city?" So, you know, there's lots of ways to talk about design, but I've always found that the best way is just to talk about before and after. What does it look like now and what can it be in the future? So as Sully pointed out, you know, it's 50 acres of asphalt. There are some trees around, but a lot of the, it's, it's a tough site, it's in the floodplain. You know, it, it's got a lot of issues, it doesn't have proper infrastructure. And so there's a huge amount of investment of almost $2 billion just to get, fix the site so that it could be used for other things. And so here you see the, the parking lot in the before and with Citi Field on the right, and then the after. Again, working with James Corner Field Operations. Again, working with James Corner Field Operations, who I consider not only the best landscape architect in New York, but maybe one of the best in the world, who did the High Line. We did Domino Park together. We've done the South Street Seaport and Pier 17 together. We've worked on Barclays together. So an amazing team to take this 25-acre park on a parking lot and really extend Flushing Meadow, Corona Park to the Bay. So on the right is Citi Field, and on the left you see the entertainment complex. The idea on the design behind the entertainment complex was to really make a kind of civic building in the plinth. We looked at places like Lincoln Center. We looked at Rockefeller Center. And to really not make it feel like a building that was from Singapore or Las Vegas or Miami, but a building that felt like it was from New York and had the DNA of New York. And instead of having a giant hotel, we made a skyline of the hotel buildings. Again, sort of reference, a very contemporary building, but one that references the DNA of the buildings that New Yorkers love. And so the entertainment complex, the food and beverage, the gaming, the music venue are all in the plinth. And then you see the hotel rooms in the towers that rise above. They were placed in a location that threw the least amount of shadow onto the park and the least amount of shadow onto the neighboring community. And again, you could see the park as it moves forward. Citi Field is actually built in the floodplain because it wasn't until Sandy that the floodplain was then raised. So the new entertainment complex is actually built up almost 30 feet with parking underneath it. And then the park comes up to meet the front door of the complex. Again, this is now along the left field side of Citi Field, looking towards Flushing Bay. You could see the 50 acres of asphalt. This is the before, and this is the after. So a lot of the park design was influenced by what the community wanted. Picnic areas, places to throw a frisbee, places to sit, places to wander, fully ADA accessible with all ramps, hills, berms, and beautiful native planting that help with the climate resistance on the site. The other thing that was critical was the subway station. Sully mentioned it before, Jelisa mentioned it, but it's a pretty rough station. It's, you know, this is your view when you come off the platforms and you're on the mezzanine and you're looking towards Citi Field. So you're going up and down, and then you're behind a fence and in front of a fence, and half of it's closed. And so from this same exact spot, we really wanted to make a connection from the passerelle, which gets you across the train yard from the Long Island Railroad Station, and have a way outside of the fair zone to move directly into the park itself. So it goes from this to wide open here, where you see you're on a raised platform. There's then beautiful steps that bring you down and ramps as well and elevators as well that get you down to the lower level. Or you can move to the left across a footbridge that gets you over to the entertainment complex. On the right would be the Taste of Queens Food Hall, giving affordable food options, both for the people coming to visit the entertainment complex, but also for the community in the neighborhood. So then moving out, this is now looking to the east, towards soccer and the new Willets Point neighborhood. And now you would see you're on this raised plaza. Here is the food hall that also contains community space. And you could see the park also moves to the east. It doesn't just go straight north and south so that when people are coming to that new neighborhood, instead of walking along underneath the seven train on a kind of broken, dark sidewalk, they can walk through a park to the new neighborhood. And the soccer fans can walk through a park to their facility. Looking back at the seven train, sort of from the rotunda of Citi Field, you could see the before. And then here you could see the newly rebuilt seven train station. As we said, you could go right through the middle without swiping your MetroCard and get directly through to the park, all with ramps, all fully ADA accessible. Then this is looking back, sort of from Seaver Way past Wright Field, back towards the seven train. Again, you could see it's just all parking lots today. And now here you could see the park. So the Taste of Queens Food Hall, and there's some parking facilities. And there's some community facilities on the left, Citi Field on the right, the park down the middle, and you could see the entertainment complex in the distance. And as we were talking about Roosevelt Avenue, really working with the community because this is the first connection point that they have to get to the center. What do we do there? And so the idea is setting any buildings that we build back, putting trees, plants, ball fields, batting cages, basketball courts, everything that the community had asked for. You know, fixing the sidewalk, having a dedicated bike lane that doesn't impede with the traffic, but is safe, wider pedestrian zones, and really connecting a lot of the active recreation closest to the neighborhoods. And then there were a couple of spots the community asked for some different things. Playgrounds. One thing that was really interesting that came was the idea of a sensory playground for children with autism, which we designed into the park. And really, again, a place that's closer to the community, but something that came out of that community engagement and that we're incredibly proud of. I will say, working with the Mets and Hard Rock has been a remarkable experience. Every time we've talked about different design decisions, they would ask what's best for the city. And we would give them our opinion, and they would follow through with it. They really had an incredible commitment to doing something great for the city of New York. You know, 50 acres of asphalt, huge problems from a sustainability and an environmental issue. It traps the heat. It has flooding problems. It creates an urban oven. You could see from the maps that it's actually incredibly hot in this particular location. It's even worse at night because in the day, it's about 12 degrees hotter on a summer day. And in the winter, I'm sorry, in the night, it goes about 22 degrees hotter because it captures the sun all day and then lets that off all night and has a negative impact on the community that lives nearby. So again, the whole project has climate resilience built into it. Solar panels on all the garage, green roofs on all the buildings, capturing the rainwater to irrigate the park, lifting it up out of the floodplain. There's too much to talk about in a meeting here, but it's something that's incredibly important to us. Just to talk about what 25 acres of park is. So we did the Domino Park, which is wildly successful and beloved by the community. That's a five-acre park, right? The High Line is seven acres. Bryant Park and Washington Square Park are 10 acres. This is 25 acres. That's two and a half times or five times the size of Domino Park. We're talking about a wide, significant project, over 300 feet wide and almost 1,000 feet long in the main portion of it. So the mapping actions are the last thing. So why are they marked as parkland? Again, Moses made them parkland so he could control the land, not that it was ever intended to be a park. It was that he could control the land and he made it a parking lot. So it has never functioned as a park. And in '61, they permitted the use of parkland for Shea Stadium. And the land is leased to the Mets. And the Mets currently have 81 years, am I right, Sully? 81 years left on the lease. The land is owned by the city. It will continue to be owned by the city. That is not changing. And it's just, how is it going to be used? So you need this legislation because it's parkland, even though it never was parkland. So the two things that the community boards are voting on and what we've been asking everyone to consider in the ULP is the idea of the city map, changes to the city map and changes to the zoning map. And these allow us to continue on the process to compete for the license. So this is the land, the blue, the land that is currently parkland. And what we are asking for is that you could de-map the lighter blue section. You can see that's the entertainment complex. You can see some of the entry roads that come in and out. We're creating a new slip lane that's an exit from the garage that gets you directly onto the Grand Central. There's the yellow is a little part that's currently a road that we are going to increase the parkland. The pink is a part that's currently a road that's going to become a road. So these few little fine tunings to the map that we are asking to change. And the second part is the zoning that the city has set out that allows gaming is called C-84. So we're just asking that we permit C-84 to be there. If the license is not won by the Mets, everything reverts back to what it is today. So we're just asking for the opportunity to continue to pursue the license. And with that said, I'm going to turn it back to Sully to conclude.
Almost done, BP. This is a wall-to-wall union project. We have our brothers and sisters in labor here today. They've been with us every step of the way. We are going to create 23,000 union jobs. The full-time employment of the building is about 6,600 once it's open. Again, union projects. We've signed agreement with our local trades, with HTC and with building trades. We've created a program to directly link the people coming from all over the world to this project, to the small businesses and cultural institutions around us. What we're going to do is allow people to use the points that they get on their Hard Rock Unity Card. It's like a frequent guest card. Every dollar you spend at any Hard Rock property, you get points to go spend those points to get a meal at a local restaurant. We've signed up over 100 local restaurants. I'd like to make it 300. We're still working to sign up restaurants in the neighborhoods around us. Use those points to pay for entrance at local cultural institutions. A way to directly link the people coming to this project to support the great businesses around us. And we'll advertise these businesses in every hotel room. We have Cheryl McKissick with us today. Cheryl is not only an equity partner, but also helping us with the construction management and ensuring that we meet the 30%. Borough President, I view this as a bare minimum. I want to blow this number out of the water. And I know if we hire from the neighborhoods around us, we'll be able to do that. I'd love for as many people that are going to be moving into the housing across the street from us that want a job at this site to come and work at this project. We are committed to meeting and exceeding this goal, and we have an incredible team helping us to do that. We have publicly released and committed to a $1 billion-plus community benefit agreement. Includes $320 million to build the 25-acre park, including the ball fields, ball courts, and athletic fields. $480 million to completely transform the MTA station, which Greg just showed you, and make the entire site climate resilient. $163 million community improvement fund, throwing up millions of dollars every year over the history of the license. We've committed to this not only for the full length of the license, but as a minimum for any extensions into the future. The Taste of Queens Food Hall and community space that you just saw, and $25 million in one-time neighborhood projects. In the interest of time, I'm not going to take you through all the details again. We talked about them. But really, what we're doing here is using this gaming license. The gaming part of this project is less than 10% of the square footage of the project, but it pays for the whole thing. It allows us the couple billion dollars of infrastructure to get up out of the floodplain and deliver all these benefits to the community and create a lot of jobs. In closing, Borough President, we view this as a once-in-a-generation opportunity to transform the area around Citi Field. We could not have done it without the extraordinary input from the community. Most of the great ideas that you saw today came from our neighbors. I didn't think of it. Steve didn't think of it. This came from the bottoms-up. Really, it's been an incredible process. A lot of the people in the room here today have been working on this for three-plus years. And for them to be able to see the ideas that came out of that bottoms-up listening process come to life is incredible. But we need to be able to advance this project through these approval stages or sadly, these parking lots are going to remain parking lots for the next 81 years. So thank you for your time and attention and look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Sully. And first, let me start off thanking your team because whether you agree with the project or not, the outreach has been consistent, and I've heard that on the ground. So I want to start by thanking you and your team on that. I'll first want to hop back into jobs for a second. So let's just go through temporary, permanent, and local hiring. So if you can just run down the number of how many jobs you anticipate.
Yeah, total of 23,000. 6,100 of those, 23,000 of the full-time jobs. So it's probably 16,000, 17,000 full-time construction jobs over the course of three to three and a half years of construction. We put a lot of people to work for a lot of years. I'm not including all the indirect benefits. Obviously, we're going to create a lot of additional jobs, feeding the construction workers, right, all of the vendors that we're going to need. We're going to need 90-plus local vendors in Queens to help support this project. Everything from local laundromats, local florists to put the flowers on the tables in the conference and meeting rooms and the public areas. We need a lot of help from a lot of different vendors in the community.
And take me through. So I saw the MWBE number, and I'm very happy that that's not the ceiling. We always want to try to get to 40%. I like to get to as close as we can. Can you take me through local hiring goals for the surrounding community?
Yeah. So we have announced a Queens Hiring Preference. What does that mean? It means that if you're from Queens and you're qualified for a job, you get the first shot at it. We have a number of workforce development partners that we've signed MOU agreements with. You know all of them. It's Urban Upbound. It's a number of the different local nonprofits that do workforce development in Flushing and Corona and East Elmhurst. We've opened up, we've taken a storefront one block south of Corona Plaza, a national street to serve as a local hiring center. We're also going to be creating a space at Citi Field to serve as a local hiring center. We're going to need to educate a lot of people about all these different job opportunities and then do a lot of training. There's a lot of jobs at this property that the skill set doesn't exist today. Surveillance technology, knowing how to repair certain types of machines. So we're going to have to train a lot of people in partnership with our brothers and sisters in labor to be able to fully staff this building. And it's going to take time. The good news is it's probably middle of '29 before the building's open. So we've got plenty of time to do this and do it right.
Tell me about reporting mechanisms on the local hiring and MWBE.
Yeah, we've committed to monthly reporting from a third party. Not from us. Cheryl, of course, will be doing the reporting for the project. But we're also going to partner with a local nonprofit who does this work in the community to do independent third-party reporting as well. So you'll be getting that on a monthly basis.
Right. And I think the three entities who should get it certainly, community board, city councilperson, Borough President's office, and I guess whoever's on the CAVs.
We're happy to commit to that.
So we want to see that in writing. And I'm very encouraged on the monthly reporting. That was something important to me. Let's go back through community benefits quick. So you have $163 million community benefit fund. Define what that means.
Yeah. So what we're committing to, and this is a bare minimum. As you know, Steve and Alex Cohen are incredibly generous and the work that the Stephen Alexandra Cohen Foundation stands separate and apart from this. The work that the Amazing Mets Foundation does and will continue to do stands apart from it. This is just dollars that this project, this partnership between us and Hard Rock are committing to. $163 million over 30 years. We're going to have a local community board that instructs us what the priorities are. If there's one thing that I've learned over the four years of working on this project is year to year, the needs change. If we try to decide today, you know, here are the five, six, eight, 10 things that we should be focusing on in terms of the philanthropy, they'll probably be different in three, five, 10 years. And so we've committed to creating a local board. Queens residents, people that receive the funds can't be on it. It's got to be independent folks. We'll turn over the board so it's fresh and that we get fresh opinions on a regular basis. But we need that input, and we'll take the input for the recommendations in terms of where the dollars go. We want to reserve the right to make sure that the groups give the majority of the funding to programmatic, right? It doesn't go to overhead, that there's no issues in terms of, you know, problems that the organizations have had, that they're good, upstanding organizations. But we want the community to really direct us in terms of where these dollars go.
And how much revenue do you anticipate a year?
It's a really hard question because we haven't gotten the round two questions from the Gaming Commission yet. That'll give us some of the key details we need to know so we can do the economic model. The other piece of this is it is a bidding process in terms of what the tax rates are. So I can't stand here to tell you today what we're going to end up needing to bid to win a license. I can tell you it's a minimum $500 million upfront license fee. All of these dollars go to the MTA and education. So every dollar this project generates comes back to the state of New York. So every dollar this project generates comes back to the state of New York, comes back to the city in form in terms of MTA and education dollars. We also in the bidding process will bid up the slot tax rate and the table game tax rate. So there's minimums, ten and twenty five percent, but you can bid them up as part of the bidding process. So I'm not going to know until probably third quarter next year, once we've gone through that bidding process, how much taxes we'll pay, which would tell me how much we'll end up actually.
And I and I said that because obviously I'm interested in the hundred and sixty three million dollar number growing.
Great. Understood.
Right. But we'll revisit that. Just take me through community facility space, the Taste of Queens Food Hall, which I'm extremely excited about. Because I like to eat. Being the Borough President, you just eat, you're just eating around the borough. But just take me through, what's the square footage of the 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 facility?
It's about thirty thousand square feet. So what we're thinking about is probably twenty to twenty five food vendor stalls. You got to be from Queens. You got to have a great ethnic cuisine from somewhere in Queens to be able to get into the building. There's no Arby's, there's no McDonald's, no disrespect to any of the chain restaurants, but you got to be a local Queens small business to be able to get a kiosk, an outpost at the Taste of Queens Food Hall. We're going to have to have to help subsidize those food stalls. We want these to be affordable food options. It was very clear from the neighbors around us, from Mets fans, that it's great if you have some really beautiful steak houses and seafood restaurants and high end entertainment in the resort building, but we want affordable food options too. So we will subsidize that food vendor hall. The community space is flexible space. We heard everything you could imagine in terms of the desired uses, places to do dance recitals, places for English as a second language classes, places for nonprofits to do board meetings. On the second floor of that building, we're also going to have a community and event space. There was a desire for nonprofits to be able to have a place to have their galas, to have their meetings, to, you know, do larger events as well.
And I would hope, and based on all the things happening on Roosevelt Avenue right now and the crackdowns, that we're really working with street vendors on Roosevelt. It is my hope that we can bring some of these individuals who are very talented into the fold for this, who sell some outstanding food, by the way, as well. Who are vilified, but I want them to be a part of this process.
We would love that. It's something that we've heard. It's part of why we designed things the way we did. But I also think there's an opportunity before the building ever opens. We're going to have sixteen seventeen thousand construction workers. Our union brothers and sisters that need to get a meal. You know, it's a food desert today out at Willits Point. So the opportunity to create a zone where street vendors could help us to feed our workforce every day. It's something we're happy to help set up. We don't need to make a profit on it. We're happy to facilitate it. So it's clean, it's orderly, there's bathrooms, there's lighting, it's done appropriately. But I think there's an opportunity there before this project's ever done to help a lot of our street vendors who I've spent a lot of time with. What they tell me is even though they don't go to Mets games, a lot of them, and they don't have the schedule, they know when we're having a game. They feel the foot traffic, right? They see the uplift. And so I've gotten great feedback that to be able to have something happening year round in the Citi Field area to help them in terms of the people coming through the area looking for a bite to eat on their way to work, whatever it might be, it'd be a huge benefit for them.
All right. I look forward to working with you on that, by the way. Just want a few more questions before we get to the public. Let's talk about traffic and congestion. What is the coordination? Because obviously there's no coordination right now between the USTA and Citi Field. We hear this complaint all the time when the USTA comes in to town. But also, what is the coordination with NYCFC? Will there be games the same night? So if you can just speak to how that's going to work in terms of scheduling?
It is a great question. So what we're doing is completely realigning all of the parking on the site. The principle by which our traffic and parking engineers who are here today, so if we have more detailed questions, they can help answer them, is to try to have people coming from certain locations, park in certain locations, so that after a game, they can get back onto the highway without getting on a local road. So a lot of the redesign, a lot of the new slip ramps that we're asking you to approve as part of this rezoning action allows us to really improve the whole traffic and parking situation. There will not be a baseball game at the same time as a soccer game. Though our agreement we've struck is we get the baseball schedule first, they slot in soccer games when the Mets are away. If for some reason we get rained out and have to switch the time of our baseball game to a game a day that there's a soccer game, they have to move the soccer game to deconflict the games so that we don't have games on top of each other. We are going to program the concerts in the concert hall around baseball and tennis and soccer. It's not good for us if our guests don't have a great experience. We want people to come. Have it be a great experience coming, parking, getting up to whether it's baseball, tennis or soccer. We're putting a new garage on the South Field east side of the site. One of the things that we heard over and over again is people hate the fact that during the tennis three weeks, people park on the grass in the Flushing Meadows Corona Park and on the curbs and in the streets in our neighborhoods around us. So we've designed the parking to provide plenty of parking so that we can meet all the different needs, tennis, baseball, soccer. We have to continue to provide commuter parking for people who want to commute using the seven line. And we've also committed some additional spaces for the Parks Department. We do as a courtesy today, as part of this project, we'll be making a commitment to the Parks Department to be able to use those spaces long term. Parking is really expensive. It's over a hundred thousand dollars of space. So we don't want to overbuild it. You know, we're trying to drive to the extent we can as much mass transit adoption. This year alone, we've knocked over a thousand cars off the average game attendance coming to Citi Field by driving mass transit, bringing city bikes to the site. We love the efforts that you and Councilman Moyer are making to try to bring back the ferry service. At almost every listening session we had, the ferry came up. People loved it when we had it. Obviously, the dock got damaged during Sandy. We think it'd be a game changer to let people come to this site by ferry service.
Yep. And just in terms of MTA coordination, what about buses?
Yeah. So as part of your redesign of the Queens bus routes, we've gotten additional bus stops at our site, which is fantastic. We are relocating all of our bus parking underneath the building so that people have a closer walk to tennis, baseball and soccer. You don't see the buses anymore. They're hidden. They're under the building, but it'll be a better experience for people coming by bus. I expect by twenty thirty, we probably will have new bus routes. We want to accommodate them. Whether it's our employees, our fans, the staff at Citi Field, the more people we can get coming to the site by mass transit, the better for us.
And go through open space now. Who will be maintaining it? Will it be NYC parks or is it private or?
We are maintaining the park.
Okay.
It will be a New York City Public Park. We have to maintain the park to Parks Department specifications.
So the hours will be comparable.
Set by set by the Parks Department, and so we'll have to work with them on the hours.
And maintenance is what?
So we're committing to the maintenance.
Okay.
The public safety, private security. It won't be an additional burden on the NYPD. We're providing private security, Kishant Sewell, who you know is now working with us at the Mets and helping us to design that with Hard Rock. So we're providing private security for the whole site.
Do you have a number of how many security guards you would hire at this point?
I think we might. I don't. Jeff, do you know it off the top of your head?
No, I don't, Sully. I apologize.
BP, I'll get you a number by the end of the meeting. If we could just text and ask ask that question.
Okay.
I think we have a projection.
Okay. And then I know community boards and it's very rare that we see community boards agree all together on a project. So I that's great. Were there any recommendations that they made outside of their approvals?
No formal recommendations. No, it wasn't conditional approvals. We got a lot of great ideas in the discussions and lots of things that, you know, we continue to talk to our neighbors and get input, and so we'll we'll continue to to do that. I mean, we want to make this project better every day.
And but there were some, obviously, some concerns, right? So what were those concerns?
Listen, everybody's concerned about traffic.
Okay.
Right? The highways around us are congested, you know, depending on the time of the year. And so we hear it. You know, Steve's on Twitter. If somebody's sitting in a parking lot at Citi Field and can't get out in a good amount of time, they're tweeting at him, right? And so the mandate that I got from Steve is at least within all the things within our control on our site, we've got to make the traffic and parking situation better, and we're spending over a billion dollars to do that.
My last question goes to gambling and obviously gambling addiction is real. And so I'm interested in hearing what are some strategies and perhaps some organizations you'll be working with in terms of working with those individuals who may be at your site twenty four hours, seven days a week. What would be the hours at a casino too?
It'll be open twenty four hours.
Twenty four hours.
Yes, sir.
So what strategies would there be to identify people?
I have the the head of responsible gaming globally for Hard Rock here with me, Paul Palazzari. I'd love to, if it's okay with you, call him up. He's going to be training all the staff in this building along with the local partners that we've signed up to help us. And so with your permission, I'd love to call up Paul to answer the question. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Borough President. Responsible gambling is a huge priority for Hard Rock. I'll I'll touch on your questions in terms of the community partnerships that we're going to be forming, but as an introduction, I'll talk about what we do and how we deploy those resources with our community partners. So when you ask, casino gaming has been around for a long time. The region's been served, but but not with a facility like this. For us, how we want to prevent and mitigate the effects of problem gambling is critical. We have education programs that are aimed at all players, whether you're new, casual, regular, risk or harm. We train all of our team members. So anyone who's guest facing, whether you're a slot attendant or a drink server or a supervisor or a security officer, they are all trained. There's three training programs, an online, an online refresher every year, and then for supervisors and managers, there's two hours of classroom training where we train them on the red flag signs.
Mandatory?
Mandatory.
Okay.
Yes, this is all part of our compliance regime. So all supervisors and managers receive training on recognizing red flag signs of a gambling problem and then how to interact and intervene with people who do that. What can we do as casino team members? Well, first of all, we don't actually want problem gamblers in our sites. Sometimes people think that we do. We don't, because people who run out of money aren't going to be good long term customers, not good for the community, right? And we are present for very long periods of time in all the communities where we operate. So it's just, it's not good business. It's not good for public health. We train all of our team members to interact. And one thing that's critical for us, and one of the things we're proud of, is being integrated into the services of the community. Because what can you do as a casino employee? If you see someone who's showing signs, you can refer them to a program called self exclusion, where people voluntarily ban themselves from the casino. That's most effective when combined with treatment. And the treatment piece is really important, and that's where the local partnerships come in. So we have already, at this stage in this process, signed MOUs with local organizations, including Elm Core and Sayida is here today, with Korean Community Services, with Korean American Family Service Center, and with Hamilton Madison House. Those MOUs have very concrete and particular commitments that we've made. And it starts with doing research on the prevalence of gaming activity in the Queens neighborhood and communities and problem gambling prevalence. What does it look like today? How many people are going to horse tracks? How many people are going to casinos? How many people are playing online? We don't have that. With that intelligence, we can then start building up programs that are catered to the populations we have here. And so that's why we've chosen those partners. We will co-design, like we have a training program, but we always go into local communities and say, we want you to help us to make it particular for your community. And we want you to train our team members so that they are able to provide culturally competent and linguistics linguistically appropriate services. So if someone's from the Korean community and they need to register in self exclusion, we need to have team members there who speak Korean and understand how what gambling means for that culture, right? We're also going to create co-developed education programs and campaigns. And so this will be funding and resources that Hard Rock will bring in, in addition to all the requirements from the state and from.
Is there a dollar figure attached to that?
Don't have an exact dollar figure at this point, but it'll be significant.
Okay, yeah. And then I don't know if Sully wants to touch on this, just marketing. And I'm I'm always grateful, Resorts World is in my backyard technically, and I can't tell you that I've ever seen a promotion in my neighborhood on it. So I'm just interested in knowing, being that you'll be close in proximity to Corona, to Flushing, to Jackson Heights. Will you commit to not marketing or over marketing in these neighborhoods to drive people to gambling?
Yeah, Borough President, I have the person who is responsible for the marketing, Jeff Hook, is online. If I could defer that question to him.
Hi, welcome. I'm happy to be with everybody today. I'm the Executive Vice President in charge of marketing, so I'm happy to answer that question, Borough President. So first of all, there's an advertising code of commitment that we've made that addresses a lot of what you're talking about. We've adopted it. The American Gaming Association has adopted it. Jim Allen's the, you know, up until the beginning of this year was the chairman of the AHA. So so one, we certainly would adhere to that, and I'm happy to share that through Sully, what the that code of commitment is. So that included things like, you know, not advertising near schools, making sure that we don't advertise to folks who are under the age of gambling and things like that. In terms of over marketing, so I'm not sure I know exactly what that means. I will tell you, you know, when you go into New Jersey, you can't escape a sports betting app on TV, and that's been a real issue, and people are trying to address that. So I would say, you know, we haven't, and we never do things like that. I also think, you know, as it gets, as it relates to, do we market through our database to folks who, you know, aren't playing at a level where we know they can afford to gamble? The answer is absolutely not. We actually are probably one of the few companies who set our our thresholds fairly high for who we try to, you know, market to from a database perspective. So I hope I directly answered your question. If not, I'm happy to go deeper on any specific area.
Yeah, and we'll take a look at that as well, but I just wanted to stress that's important to us. And that will certainly be part of our recommendation. I don't know if Vicki.
Borough President, can I amend one thing I said? Community Board Six had a condition, which was that the community benefit dollars go to the local community and they go to Queens, which we've already committed to, and they made sure to emphasize that fact. So we were happy to accept that.
And I would hope prioritization, because Queens is a large borough, that the community centered around the site are prioritized, not saying other people can benefit as well, but I I would anticipate and expect. That would be my expectation.
Absolutely.
And even as that advisory board is formed, not saying that we want to be close, but certainly elected officials should have a seat at the table as well. Maybe that's the CAD members, whatever that is, in advisory role, certainly. So I wanted to put that out there as well. And then reporting on annually on where those dollars are going as well would be something we would want to see a requirement on as well.
Happy to do that.
Yeah. So transparency is there as well and accountability. All right. With that being said, thank you for your presentation. We now will get to the general public.
Okay, thank you for your patience. Our staff member, Sola Olo Sunday, will be announcing folks that have signed up to publicly testify. Please bear with us. There's a lot of people here. So we will try to get through the testimony. Each each person has three minutes to give their testimony. So Sola?
Yes, the first speaker we have is Joanne Yu.
Joanne, I don't see her. Is she on Zoom? She may be on Zoom. And just clarify if they're in Zoom or in person, we should try to. Check Zoom. She's on. She's on Zoom. All right, I see her.
Yeah, she's on Zoom. Sorry about that.
Hi, can I go?
Hi.
Can I go?
Yeah.
We can hear you. Great. Thank you so much for this opportunity, Borough President. This is a very important matter. I am technically on vacation today, but I signed up because I did want to offer some thoughts. And I, you know, that I hold you in the highest esteem because you and I both share in the struggle for the betterment of this borough. And so I, as somebody who has worked in Queens and has fought for the residents of Flushing for the last twenty years, I wanted to share some information with everybody. At the start of this casino conversations around the state, I was contacted by other casino projects. And every single meeting, my talking points and questions were the same. How will you benefit the area? What are the community givebacks? What are your plans to create good paying jobs that help particularly working people from communities of color, so on and so on? The questions got so routine that I actually just typed that up and printed it up for every meeting. After the first meeting, the only project that actually called me back was Metro Park. They had answers and plans and willingness to listen. Sully offered me his cell phone number, which I refuse to take even to this day because I don't want to cross those lines of calling him for everything and all my fifty thousand questions that I tend to have. I'm here to comment on Metro Park's plans because I can't comment on the quality of other projects because they fail. because they fail to answer the most basic of my questions after the first round. Based on my experience, my thinking is that if we're going to get a casino in New York City, which is very likely, I want to see the group that worked hard to gain the trust of the community, offer $1 billion community, but $1 billion worth of community benefits to the very neighborhood that I fought for for 20 years, come out on top. Borough President, we recently saw a presidential election that turned on the issue of the economy. Every day, people spoke loudly through their ballots that we need economic stability. Can we really afford to lose an opportunity to say no to tens of thousands of union paying job, union jobs? Can we afford to reject plans that offer a pathway to economic security for Queens families? I have heard the criticisms, I have been watching this very clearly. And there have been criticisms about, you know, we have something better, we want this, we can offer something better. Well, where is the better plan? I want to see what the better plan is. We have had this conversation long enough to be able to discern what is a plan? What is a better plan? Who is going to benefit? We have not had anything presented. We cannot, we cannot be a city, a borough, a community of just naysayers. I really do believe bird in the hand is worth two in the bush. And we have a plan. As a community leader, Sully knows that I have my asks for the community. I love seeing those MWBE jobs, because he knows, and I have been very vocal about asking for how many of those community benefits jobs will come to the Asian community? How many of the suppliers will be Asian American? My list is growing, and Sully is very much aware of that my asks will continue to involve different business associations, communities of color, immigrant small businesses. I want to fight for, for the best economic opportunity, not just for Asian Americans, immigrant communities, but Queens residents. And I feel like this is a viable plan. We have to get in there, and we have to fight. We can't just keep saying no. We've got to have an opportunity to be able to play the game and to be able to ask for things. They have not, Metro Park and Sully have never said no to anything that we have asked for, and.
Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, thank you very much.
All right, the next speaker is Lorinda Hooks. Yes, she's in person.
She's in person. Love how people love to play, love to put me at the front. Good morning, Queens Borough President. How are you? Good morning. I wore yellow today, because I wanted to show that this project will become a bright light in the community. It has now been something that was desolate, something that was dim, and now something like this project is going to make it bright. I have the unique pleasure of being the President of the East Elmhurst Corona Civic Association, as well as the Assemblywoman-elect for AD35. And I say it because this district is the only district that has the homes that surrounds this project. So I have the distinct pleasure of speaking for my community. I've done my own as running for office, I've done my own, I want to say, survey, but actually speaking to people at the doors, actual people. Eighty-five percent of my community is in favor of this project. So as I stand here, I stand here on behalf of them, because they're the ones who's going to have the most impact, good or bad, with this project. And for them to say overwhelmingly that they're for the project because of economic development, because we were the epicenter of the epicenter of COVID, and a lot of jobs have not come back, they are looking for economic stability. They don't want to be on all of the pantry lines like they are now. They want to be have dignity, they want to be able to feed themselves and bring food on their table by having a job. So as everyone is speaking, and I know it's all about Queens, Queens get the money, but this district here, AD35, is directly affected. And their voices should be heard to me the most, because they have to deal with whatever comes there. And they are overwhelmingly in support of this project happening, because they don't like it being desolate. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, the next speaker is Eddie McWilliams.
Thank you, Borough President, for giving us the opportunity to weigh in on this extraordinary project. My name's Edward McWilliams, I'm the Executive Director of the Cement and Concrete Workers District Council, Lesset Fund. We work with our members, the concrete workers and the employers that employ them. Our priority is clear, to create opportunities to uplift working class families in Queens, in New York City, to build stronger communities and to ensure a brighter future for working class families. Our members alongside our contractors who employ them are strongly aligned in our support for the development of Metropolitan Park here in Queens. And I'll tell you why. Metropolitan Park will make Queens a better place to live, it will make Queens a better place to work. It's undeniable that cities and counties across America only wish they had the opportunity that we have right here and right now in Queens. An enormous $8 billion investment in our community, in Queens, to transform this vacant asphalt-covered parking lot, which currently serves no one, into a thriving center of entertainment, recreation, but most importantly, an economic engine for Queens, Queens County, and all of New York City. It's really a game changer. And why do I say this? And I'm going to focus, coming from labor, on jobs. Queens is home to thousands of people who work very hard and tirelessly to support their families, to pay the bills. And as hard as they work, there are still a lot of people in Queens who are struggling because they don't have health insurance, or childcare. It's a big problem, it's very costly. This project, this development, promises to deliver 23,000 jobs that are going to be under collectively bargained agreements, they're going to have good wages, they're going to have good healthcare. And if it's here in Queens, they're going to have shorter commutes, they're going to have less time traveling to work. And that's just as important for working class families, who are struggling to, you know, keep their family, have their kids go to school, get home, paying for childcare, very, very important. And let's talk about the entrepreneurs in Queens. There's a lot of small businesses in Queens, as we heard earlier. This is going to create an untold amount of opportunities for those small businesses, for those young entrepreneurs, not just now, but in the future. The people who are going to go to school and know that there's opportunity in these developments in Queens, to build businesses, to grow their business, employ more people to that way. We talk about the beautiful parks, and why is that important? It's the quality of life. There's no family getting up right now, and as our future Assembly Member, Mrs. Hooks, said, they're not getting up and saying, Sunday morning, let's go spend the day in a parking lot. So I'll finish. I want to thank the Borough President and all our elected leaders here who've worked hard to build the infrastructure around it, gave us this opportunity to build Metropolitan Park here, and will its point. It's a monument, it's a moment for opportunity and progress. Let's not, let's unite, let's pave the way together, let's collaborate and build this consensus, and bring this $8 billion opportunity to Queens. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, and our next speaker is Costa Konstantinides.
Think I know him. You got a hard sell, brother.
Mr. Borough President, always good to see you, brother. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm strongly in support of Metropolitan Park. You know, as you know, I've taken my son Nico to 28 out of the 30 major league parks throughout the country. And what I've seen as a trend is that they're building communities around these stadiums to create economic development, to create entertainment for communities. And I was in Atlanta, outside Trist Park, because that's where the National Boys and Girls Club were, and I was there for a conference. You know, Nico and I went and had lunch, we tossed the ball around outside, we went to the ballgame. It was a day at the ballpark. Here in Queens, we don't have that. You know, we need that here. I look forward to a day where I can take Nico and play catch at one of the new ballfields, take the train, or walk, because I actually live in East Elmhurst now, and then spend the day there, have some lunch, go to a ballgame with him and Eva, you know, bring the kids home, get a babysitter, have a night out with Heather, you know, go get, you know, have a nice entertainment, see some Hard Rock entertainment, maybe do a little gambling, and then go home. All here in our own borough. I don't want to have to go over a bridge, I don't, I don't drive at night over bridges anymore, I'm getting older. I don't want to go over a bridge or through a tunnel or on a highway to do something that we could have done here in Queens. The jobs should be here in Queens, the money should be coming here in Queens. When you talk about this part of Queens right now, it's a land of opportunity. Right now, there is no, as you know, the environmental, there is no sewer. The only park there is in the word parking over the, on the sign over the parking lot. It's not really a park. The ambient temperature in that part of Queens is extremely high, because what happens, as you know, as former Chair of the E P Committee, when the sun hits the asphalt, it just keeps in that heat. So the community around it gets hotter. The sewer system's not being built because of the legacy of Robert Moses has created runoff that destroys our waterways, and already Flushing Bay and Flushing Creek have over 5 billion gallons of sewage going into it. This is an opportunity to change the course of this community for the long term and build a legacy, and for all of us here in Queens. Now, the last part, I don't know how much time I have, but I'll just tell a quick story about
30 seconds.
problem gambling. I lived in a problem gambling house. My father had a really serious gambling problem. He gambled away my college fund, he gambled away, you know, our, you know, his severance package from Bankers Trust when he left in the early 90s. He did it in an illegal club, in one of the John Gotti clubs. There was no one there trying to give him advice not to gamble. They were more than happy to take every dollar he had and our family had. And I had to live with that. I remember getting beaten up by a bookie at 16 years old. That was my life. So when this, we talk about an opportunity, you know, really, I could lose all of my money on the way walking out of this building online. I'd rather, you know, this gambling is everywhere, it's here. It's not, whether we have this casino or not, it's here. I'd rather have an institution in our own borough that actually allows us to have safety, to have the programs Paul designed, rather than just having a free for all where everyone's on their phones or they're going to illegal clubs. I'd rather have that and have something that's a legacy for the borough of Queens.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now, next speaker is Brian Chen.
I got there on. It's going to be extremely hard to follow previous speakers, but I'll try. Morning Borough President, it's a pleasure to be here today, and thank you for the opportunity to address you. My name is Brian Chen, lifelong Queens resident, and also the Chief Strategy Officer at the Chinese American Planning Council, organization that I know you're very familiar with. I have here a prepared testimony from CPC that I'm proud to share today in full support of the Metropolitan Park project. The Chinese American Planning Council is a nearly 60-year-old social services organization rooted in community and anchored throughout New York City, including our Queens Community Center that serves tens of thousands of residents across the borough annually. From early childcare and after-school programs to English literacy classes and older adult programming, our holistic services ensure community members not only survive, but thrive. The Chinese American Planning Council is fully supportive of the inclusive, community-integrated workforce and economic development potential of the Metropolitan Park project as it aligns with our agency's mission to promote the social and economic empowerment of immigrant and low-income New Yorkers. As an organization that provides linguistically accessible and culturally competent employment services and wraparound supports, we believe Metropolitan Park has the potential to move the needle on economic mobility for Queens residents by creating real pathways for the upscaling, hiring, and retention of local talent. My colleague Joanne shared the importance of that within the Asian American and Pacific Islander community, and we share that same prioritization of ensuring local API talent is hired and retained. Through the project's commitment to supporting workforce training, job creation, and career advancement, Metropolitan Park is positioned to be an opportunity hub inclusive of the local business community and the borough's diverse, but often marginalized populations, including the multilingual, multi-generational immigrants, individuals with disabilities, and underemployed and unemployed Queens residents served by community organizations such as the Chinese American Planning Council and other partners that you're going to hear from today. Just wanted to thank you again for your time.
Thank you, thank you for your testimony.
Now, next speaker is Devon Lomax. Is he in person, or?
Devon Lomax? I think we can move on.
All right, the next speaker is Christian Batris.
Good morning, Borough President. Good morning. Thank you very much for having us over here. My name is Christian Batris, and I'm a proud both resident and of Queens, and a member of the New York City District Council of Carpenters. I'm here today to express my enthusiastic support for the Hard Rock and the Metropolitan Park bid for a casino license in Queens. This project represents more than just a gaming facility. It's an opportunity for our community to benefit for significant economic growth, job creations, and long-term investment. With this proposal, we're not just looking at a world-class entertainment venue in Queens. We're looking at thousands of good-paying jobs, union jobs, that will sustain families like my family in Queens and beyond. As a carpenter, as a union carpenter, and someone who deeply understands the value of fair wages and strong benefits, I know that the Hard Rock, Hard Rock, I'm sorry, and New York Mets teams, we commit to the working, we commit to work with local labor unions, meaning this project will reflect the highest standards of craftsmanship, safety, and integrity. It is not just about building a casino, it's about building a brighter future for our community in Queens. This project will energize our economic, economy, uplifting the working class people like my family, and reinforce Queens as a premier destination for entertainment and commerce. I really, I'm really asking over here to the decision-makers to support and, you know, this fascinating vision, you know. Me as growing up in Queens, I have seen a lot of changes, and everything is for the better and for the communities. I still can't afford to live in Queens because I'm part of the union, and I know the Hard Rock Hotel and Metropolitan Park, and they pushing for that, you know, they pro people for us, people like me and you, like regular working-class people. So I really appreciate time over here, and I really appreciate what they're bringing to Queens, because with better wages like that, we can succeed in this, you know, community in Queens. Thank you very much for your support, and thank you very much for him.
Thank you.
All right, the next speaker is Jose Tahada. Oh, they'll be speaking on Zoom.
Mute yourself, Jose. All right, thank you. We're good, Omar? Okay. Promote Jose as a panelist? He's on Zoom?
Yeah, he's promoted, he's just not ununited.
Okay. Unmute Jose? If not, we'll move on? All right, we'll move on to the next speaker.
All right, the next speaker is Danny Drum, and he's on Zoom.
I'm muted?
You are, oh.
Okay.
Okay. Good morning, uh, Mr. Borough President. It's good to see you. And it's, uh, great to be able to speak in favor of this project. I've spoken at several of the community boards as well, because I do believe that this is a once in a lifetime opportunity. For us who live here in the Borough of Queens. Uh, and as has been mentioned previously, the opportunity for twenty-three thousand union jobs is just incredible. I don't think we've ever had a project this large that would hire that many union folks. So I support it for that reason. I support it also because of the renovation of the number seven train station there. That train station is basically a dump and it really is in need of work. In fact, I, I fought for much of my tenure in the New York City Council to, um, renovate that number seven line. And it really was just never, we were never successful in getting it actually done. Uh, I'm also very impressed, um, by the fact that the park will be twenty-five acres. And it will extend from the waterfront all the way through and go through to the other side of Roosevelt Avenue and offer opportunities for youth. For basketball, volleyball and other types of sports. Also the vendor space, something that was really important to me. Many, when I was a city council member, many people in my district were in fact vendors and they need this opportunity to work. They want to work. And having that opportunity to work would be great. The Hard Rock Cafe. How else will we get wonderful Hard Rock Cafe concerts in our borough unless we have this project? And let me just speak also to Steve Cohen, who is highly reputable and who I deeply believe will keep all of his promises. And let me also address this idea of gambling addiction. You know, I'm thirty-three and a half years clean and sober. And addiction is really a disease of the attitudes. We tried prohibition in the nineteen twenties and thirties, uh, for alcohol and it didn't work. And so we're not going to, uh, eliminate gambling addiction by not having casinos. And in fact, actually you can, uh, gamble on your phone right now if you really wanted to. Those who are like me and who are addicts need to, uh, go to programs like Elm Core, which by the way is in support of this program. For the type of help that you need if you have a gambling addiction. And I appreciate the previous, uh, testimony about the, um, the, uh, commitment to working with those who have gambling addictions. Um, and I just think overall that this project would be a fantastic benefit to the Borough of Queens. And that's why I'm proud to support it. So thank you, Mr. Borough President, for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you for your testimony.
And our next speaker is Margaret Flanagan.
Hello, everyone. Thank you Borough President. I'm Margaret Flanagan, a lifelong resident of Queens and a volunteer with Guardians of Flushing Bay. And I'm speaking in opposition to the project because call it a park or a parking lot. Either way, it is all still publicly owned open space, so precious in our dense urban neighborhoods. So I encourage you to vote no on this de-mapping. The twenty-five acres of lovely green in the presentation is already technically parkland. But this de-mapping action will make Flushing Meadows Park smaller, forever losing twenty-five acres of publicly owned open space. So if you vote yes, vote yes with conditions and require a one-for-one acre replacement of the de-mapped parkland at another Queens location such as Flushing Airport. Vote no on the commercial zoning, which would make this an even worse deal. Multiply the rent of commercial space by the acreage, by the floors, by the length of the lease. And there are many, many more billions of dollars at stake than are revealed right now. You, uh, led with that question yourself. Um, so just across the street, Willetts Point Phase Three Area B is an existing commercial zone ready for development. But instead to increase profits, the applicants want our public land commercialized. Or if you vote yes, vote yes with conditions and make that a hundred and sixty-three million dollar community benefit an annual obligation. Lasting the life of the casino as you've already been discussing. Also, please recognize that the D E I S is manipulative and only analyzes displacement of affordable housing and small businesses. Within a tiny quarter mile radius of the proposed casino, which is absurdly mostly parkland and waters of the bay. It's a bait and switch that the applicants brag about the wide community engagement of our neighborhoods. But actually leave those same people out of the study of displacement. If you vote yes, require the applicants expand their D E I S displaced displacement analysis to the full community districts. And make a plan to avoid any negative effects of gentrification. I also call on you to specifically prohibit a casino on this site. Why are we being threatened? We could have nothing without it. Our elected officials could work with the applicants for matching funds for New York State Environmental Protection Fund that builds real parks. Our electeds could look to bring in climate readiness funds, public funds for environmental justice. And we could have a better park without a casino. Please visit the website queensforall.com to see the Phoenix Meadows Vision Plan. An option to make this public space better for the people and not a free land use grab for a private developer's profit. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Lang Ming who is on Zoom.
Call her again.
Lang Ming. Lang Ming.
And no one here. We'll move on to the next speaker. Come back in a minute.
All right. The next speaker is Jerry Lo. Jerry Lo.
Hello.
Morning, Mr. Borough President. Oh, Ming.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay, hi. Uh, good morning. Uh, this is Liang Ming, uh, at Grow Cultural Center. We located in downtown Flushing. And we primarily provide the cultural, educational and social program for local community. Uh, for today's public speaking hearing, uh, I'm very glad to say I definitely support the, this Queens future program. Simply because it's our future, because, uh, as a cultural organization in Flushing, we feel like we need more partners. And even more impactful programs to bring the, to bring back the economic growth in the area. And to me as a Flushing resident personally, I would say I support this because, it's simply because. I would love to see the live music from the prominent, prominent, uh, Chinese singers, Asian singers. To have a live concert in my neighborhood area so that I don't have to travel for three or four hours to Upper State. Uh, so this is my proposal. I suggest all the leaders, committee members would consider my suggestion. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. You may begin, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, good seeing you.
Good seeing you.
Hi, my name is Jerry Lo and, uh, also I am the co-chair of the Grow Community Centers. And I'm a small businessman in Flushing area. And, uh, what happened is like, uh, we have so many friends that already tell what's the benefit we have. Uh, one thing I, I like to bring it up is like, my family is born, my family is from Macau. I don't know, anybody know about Macau? This is the last weekend in Asia. And, uh, they have the casino over there for the past decade. And, uh, especially what happens like, uh, the government right now, they have. Good enough tax money from the casino. And, uh, it's only a small city over there. It's only like six, around six hundred million, uh, six hundred, uh, thousand people over there. And, uh, basically each person they got every year, they have. The, uh, what we call the bonus sharing from the government, one thousand dollars around. So this is only for the reference. The reason why I bring it up is like, it helps the community. And, uh, not only for the job and for everything actually, uh, for the, uh, for the health and everything's health insurance. We don't have to worry about over there. It's a, it's a free, free healthcare over there in Macau. And, uh, so hopefully someday if we can have that kind of things. Borough President, you're still young. You may be getting more upper level that you can take care of the whole New York City or, or even more, right? So, uh, we need, we need that. We need the people really concerned about community. Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, Sully, you committed to free healthcare for every Queens resident, by the way. That was a good suggestion, by the way.
The next speaker is Huiyun Lee.
Mister Lee, okay. And so let's just tell me if they're on Zoom or in person. I don't know if we have that.
Hello, everyone. Borough President. Uh, my name is Huiyun Lee, uh, Korean American Association of Kids. Uh, I'm supported, you know, Metropolitan Project Park. Uh, our community or, you know, all of our community, the kids' community, this developing project. All of a project is all of the negative side and, uh, other side with a positive side. I think more than positive side, why they getting the, you know, creative, you know, job. And then create about our community and then reach the, you know, our community. And then also our next generation getting to the playground, that's a good place. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Seth Bornstein. They'll be in person.
What's that? Oh, he's there, okay.
Thank you Borough President. Um, I'm Seth Bornstein and I'm the director of Queens Economic Development since two thousand nine, but my career spans back to nineteen seventy-nine. So I've seen a lot of development projects and, um, I prepared something here, but I think I have a great memory working for Clash Women for many years. Developers would come in and she'd say, she'd listen to them carefully and say, you're gonna put bread on the table for Queens. Tell me about the bread you put on the table. That was a criteria. And in all certain terms, if they didn't do that, they were thrown out of the office. This is a terrific project. It puts lots of bread on, lots of loads of bread on thousands of tables and families. You know, years ago, well, twenty-five years ago, this would be unthinkable in Queens, a project of this caliber. Uh, we were un, un, it was untouchable Queens for this kind of thing. But now we are desirable and the fact that this project will transform a parking lot. Into a destination for our city, for our country in many ways. And we have the diversity of people, young people who need jobs from every level, some semi-skilled to high tech. And this will provide, we have small businesses that will have opportunities, not just to construction, but down the road for generations. And the beneficiaries are families, uh, companies and neighborhoods all around the borough, especially those nearby. We do a lot of work in Corona Plaza, as you all know, and, uh, it's a poor neighborhood. Um, people there are struggling, especially after COVID. And the opportunity to walk to work or you take one subway to this new subway stop is such a tantalizing opportunity for us. So I'm just saying, based on my many years of seeing projects that never came to fruition. It would be horrible to squander this incredible opportunity. So we are very much in support of this. I look forward to it. And when I'm here, you know, forty years from now, I will be there at the, uh, one of the restaurants, whatever it is, in my wheelchair in Four or Five Canes. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Seth. Thank you for your testimony.
All right. The next speaker is Mary Macaro. She's on Zoom.
Good afternoon Borough President. I'm Mary Macaro, Vice President of Education for the United Federation of Teachers. The U F T is in strong support of the Metropolitan Park Project. There are a few reasons for that. First, I know that many of my brothers and sisters in the labor movement are sitting in that audience today. And the opportunity for union jobs, not for just our current union employees. But also for our students that are in our C T E schools in order for them to expand opportunity. In order to work right close to home, right in Queens, right from their high schools. There would be an opportunity also for that waterfront to be open. We've been talking about this a lot internally and looking at using that opportunity for our schools to go on field trips. To be able to walk right over there, use that parkland, use that as a opportunity for them to be outside. And the word opportunity has been cut up over and over as I've heard the other speakers and for us too here. We also would be proud to hold our union conventions and conferences right in the heart of Queens. Many times our Queens schools have to take, either take a bus, the train into Manhattan in order to meet with other educators. We can do that right here, right in our own backyard. As a Queens resident myself, I'm in full support on a personal level for this project. With an opportunity to bring my family to the restaurants and to the hotel. And to take opportunities to watch all of the sporting events or the, um, the. Uh, any event that would happen there. Sorry, moved, um, any event that would happen there. So again, United Federation is in full support of this project and we hope it moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
All right. Next person to speak is Tom Gresh and he should be in person.
Thank you very much. Good morning, uh, V P Richards. Um. I've got my, my, my testimony, it's been on file, but I'm gonna make it personal and somewhat philosophical. You and I have been together through a lot. Um, I've watched you grow and celebrated when you, when you became Borough President. And, uh, we cried during COVID, going to Rockaway, trying to get people vaccinated that just didn't want to get vaccinated. Um, together we were Santa Claus for about six months, giving out fifteen million dollars of Stephen Alex's money. Um, which was really a remarkable experience and I, I know we got a lot of joy out of that. Um, it's remarkable about this project, you know, yesterday you and I, I froze my butt off yesterday at, uh, New York City Football Club. You were there. It was a remarkable thing. Um, and then last night we had our annual business person of the year event. And you were very kind in your remarks that you sent in, but it's a microcosm of Queens. We honored a guy that came here fifteen years ago with like thirty dollars in his pocket. Shahid Islam from Bangladesh, and now he owns an A I company with a hundred and sixty-five people. Um, we honored Seth Bornstein, our own, for all of his years of service. We honored Saidah, uh, for all of her dedication. And then we honored the folks from New Terminal One, Jennifer Alman, that nine billion dollar wonderful project. And then lastly, we, we honored Tom Ruzwick from Masbit Bank, Queens's own. Who without even knowing the number wrote a check to pay off the mortgage for the cop that got killed in Rockaway in March. And put a hundred thousand dollars in the kids' five twenty-nine. Um, that's Queens. I feel honored to be part of it. I'm lucky to have you as our VP and I mean that very sincerely. You know, this is, this is a transformational project. Um, it's funny, I joke with Eddie all the time. I say it, but I've, I've heard it a lot. I'm like the most pro-union chamber of commerce in New York City and maybe in the country. And sometimes I get in a little bit of trouble for that, but I believe it in my heart and soul. The same thing with M W B Es. These folks have committed that, I love the fact when they say the thirty percent's the basement, not the ceiling. Um, we got the cement guys here. We've got Dave from Electricians. We got the guys from the carpenters. Um, I represent fourteen hundred members, representing a hundred and fifty thousand Queens-based employees. When I do my surveys, when I knock on the doors, when I walk around the streets of New York, they're like, Gretchen, we want this. Let anybody who listened that we want this. And it's not taking away jobs from small mom and pops. A rising tide does lift all boats. And when you see what's gonna go on there, you've seen it today, uh, maybe not for the first time. You've seen the three sixty, I'm sure. It's remarkable. It's transformative. And I, I just, I get, I just get all kinds of like almost weepy about this thing because these things don't happen every day. And I remember going to that place that my dad's seeing jet games, talking about freezing. Um, and to this day I still go to the parking lot, which is just a parking lot. Um, and Thomas and I, who's now seventeen. And Thomas and I, who's now 17, he stands at the pitcher's mound. And I go to home plate, which is now in the in the parking lot where Shay was, do that fake catch. And we always wonder about, this is a parking lot, you know, what else could we do here? And now it's almost a reality. So grateful for your leadership, grateful for your thoughts on this thing. And we full-throated wholly support this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
All right, next person is Carolina Bustamante. She should be in person.
Hello, everybody. My name is Carolina. Carolina Bustamante from Korean American Family Service Center. I have something to say here, but I'm gonna make it personal from my heart. I I have 20 years living in the US. Fears living in Corona in the heart of Corona Queens. The organization that I work advocate for victims of domestic violence, sexual assault and elderly abuse. 70% of our clients are for Flushing, Queens. I believe this project is will be a great opportunity to grow, to elevate the quality of the life of many of our clients, neighbors, staff of nonprofits, immigrants, staff like me who can't afford to live in the city. It was my dream as an as as an immigrant, but unfortunately I can't. I have to rent an apartment in Corona. Let us to let us to feel proud of something. Yes, we have been in Corona, the food vendor plaza. It's nice, but not enough to feel proud to invite my friends, our family, our colleagues to celebrate birthdays, graduations, weddings. Or simple, just to have a moment to release, to take care of my mental health, to have a beautiful place as this upcoming project, Park Casino attend to a concert. Let's see what is the condition of 103 Station. That's my station that I get off every day. And I'm sorry, but I don't feel proud of. 111 Station is isolated. It's dark. When I pass by to the Met Stadium, it's very depressive unless it's not happening in a concert or a baseball game. And by the way, many of our of us immigrants, we're not familiar with baseball game. We're more familiar with soccer game, but that's the only thing that we can like take proud with us, right? That's the only time that I like when I see people on the train coming for a concert or the baseball game. That's the only time that I feel like, oh, you're coming to my neighborhood. But that's it. After the game, they're going back to Woodside and up to celebrate. They don't stay in Corona Queens. They don't attend to the Corona vendors' food court. And this is the first time that we as an organization and individuals feel like listening by Sally and his team from such an important project. Sally and his team really listen our demands, our concerns and our requirements. In fact, our organization signed an MOU to create a workforce program, thinking in our clients, our community, our immigrants' community. Please let us to have something to be proud. Let's elevate our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is William Thompson.
Good morning, Mr. Borough President.
Mr. Comptroller.
It is. Thank you so much. It is always an honor to see you and to be able to speak on behalf of this project. One of the things, and you heard Sully in the introduction, talk about myself, my partner, Henry Sisneros, and other of my partners at Seibert, Williams, Schenck and Company as equity partners in this project. It is refreshing to see, to have them reach out and have part of the conversation to be part owners in this project. And it is because of who they are and what they want this project to be. I could speak about the $8 billion that we spent in development. I could talk about the infrastructure, the park. I could talk about how it reimagines the community, the state-of-the-art live venue. But I'm going to talk about what is dearest to me and what means the most to me in this project. And I believe to you also, because I've seen what you have done in other projects. It is the and also as a person who has spent his lifetime in fighting for minority and women-owned businesses. That is what attracts me to this project. That is what is so important. You can start to look at, as you talk about the economic impact, that'll create opportunities for local MWBE firms. First of its kind MWBE lending program with zero to low-interest loans going to those. You heard Sully talk earlier about a fund that is going to help to write down the cost of businesses participate out there and particularly in the food center and other parts out there. Subsidizing, as they said, those who don't have good credit, and you know, that's usually a bar and a band. They're going to help to subsidize them, those firms, those businesses, those firms that are also doing business there and in construction, going to help them work to be able to be able to participate. And again, recruitment and training centers, which is incredibly important. This is Metropolitan Park. And Queens is at an interesting point. You and you're through your leadership. It has been amazingly impressive. Queens is leading the city. If you look in minority and women-owned businesses, in job creation in so many different ways, you have mega projects underway under your leadership at the airport or the airports. And now this opportunity, it is a transformative moment in Queens's history, but also in the history of small and minority-owned businesses. These are projects and what we are seeing and what you're seeing these days, because people report to you on a regular basis about what's going on at the airports. What you are seeing there is people reporting back, businesses that wouldn't have had opportunity are getting jobs. Businesses that have had opportunity in the past are growing and increasing their capacity and able to do more. This is the crown. This is the jewel in that crown, this project, Metropolitan Park, that'll kind of be the cap on everything that is going on. And one of the things that is incredibly encouraging also is not only is she a partner in this, Cheryl McKissick, and I don't know if Cheryl's still here. I know she was. Cheryl knows how to get this done. She is getting it done in Terminal One. You know she knows what she is doing. So I have full faith that 30% will be the floor, not the ceiling. And it is exciting and I am honored to be part of this project. Thank you, Mr. Borough President.
Thank you for your testimony. Good to see you.
All right, our next speaker is Joseph Donnelly. They'll be in person.
Joseph Donnelly. All right, we can move on to the next person.
All right, the next person is Erica Ford. She should be speaking in person.
Not here. All right, we'll move on.
All right, the next person is David Sands, also in person.
Good morning, Mr. Borough President. How you doing, everyone? My name is David Sands. I'm a lifelong resident of Queens and I'm honored to be the Queens Business Representative for Local 3 IBW. Mr. Thompson, you nailed it. I was gonna say half of those things, you know, as I drive around the borough, especially over the last few years, you know, living here my whole life. The projects that are going on here now, you know, Queens is just thriving between the new largest high school on Northern Boulevard, that's that's just being completed. The new police precinct over near Rosedale in Queens. The new libraries, every time I turn around, there's another ribbon cutting at a library.
Two more coming.
The park improvements. I mean, this borough is amazing. The last few years, the projects that have been going on. You know, quick story. I was born in Glendale, Queens. I ran a CYO youth program in Ridgewood, Queens for seven years in the 90s. My father was a deacon in the 80s and early 90s in Far Rockaway at St. Gertrude's. I grew up going to church there. So my my son goes to school in Jackson Heights. My daughter's over at Queens College. So almost every neighborhood in Queens, I I've touched upon through through my career. And Local Three gave me the opportunity to, you know, represent this borough, which is quite an honor since I since I do reside reside here. You know, every neighborhood like Ridgewood, Queens has gone through a revitalization, you know, a story of Long Island City. You know, now it's time for, you know, the residents of Corona and East Elmhurst to, it's their time now to have this opportunity. And this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity with privately funded money, $8 billion to give back to the community. If we let this opportunity slip past, it may never come, you know, and the people that live there deserve deserve this. They deserve the parks. They deserve, you know, everything that comes with it. And of course, there is a price, you know, what's going to pay for it? You need the casino there, you know, to pay for it. If not, if we don't get this license here, it's going to stay an asphalt parking lot. And, you know, a lot of developers come here and they don't give us an opportunity in the building trades. And from day one, Metropolitan Park, the Mets in the Hard Rock have come to Local Three, have come to the building trades, have guaranteed, you know, 7, 8,000 construction jobs on top of all the permanent jobs that that are going to be there. And, you know, we really need this project. Local Three has had steady unemployment, probably around 1,000 of our members over the last few years. We've gone in the right direction. We're down to about 750 to 800 with JFK right now booming with Terminal One and Six. Every week, another 100 are coming off our unemployment list, going to that project. LaGuardia, which is now rated the number one airport, after that construction project over three years, most of those guys rolled right over to JFK. And when JFK starts winding down in three, four, five years, what better project than with to continue over Metropolitan Park? They all align. So all those guys that are over JFK will now go to Metropolitan Park. So we're really hoping on that project. You know, there's there's just so many good, good things going on in Queens and to me, I think this is a great opportunity. Before I became a business rep, I was an electrician on the 71st and 71st Avenue Roosevelt signal job down in the subways. And real quick story, we would go out on our break about midnight and we were at Roosevelt Avenue and we found all good food on the corners of empanadas. I go back there still now with my kids. And those people, I mean, to think that the Mets have even thought about those vendors to give them a spot at this food hall to get and when this job is being built for 7,000 workers, to bring them to the construction site for three years to serve 7,000 people lunch every day. That's i it's going to uplift those families incredibly. So for the people that are against this project, you know, we have to look at the bigger picture here and thank you for my time.
Thank you for your testimony. Empanada.
All right, the next speaker is Jim Burke. Should be in person.
Hi, my name is Jim Burke. Good morning, Borough President. You know me, every time I can get a better sidewalk, a better bike lane, more open space, I'm there. And you've been incredible what you've been doing in Rockaway. And I think that if we get a safe way to get to the Mets and have all this 25-acre park, whenever I go around the city and I just see a parking lot, and you know, in Rockaway was dotted with vacant and just huge spaces, very sad to see. And to get, instead of that, instead of just a bunch of cars parked, we're going to get a world-class park that's going to be maintained on their dime, right? So that's an incredible thing that people forget about. We're going to get the cars that now like ride all over Flushing Meadow during the tennis games. We're going to get those cars out of the park, right? We're going to get a safe way to bike. One of the things I love to do is I bring large groups of families and we bike to the stadium now and to the and to Flushing Meadow Park and to the waterfront. And, you know, the waterfront is kind of falling apart, right? There's not even enough money to maintain that. You know, I wish there was. I wish the government would step in and do all these things. But I've been waiting 20 years to get a safe way to bike and walk, to have lighting, you know, to all these amazing things that we've been fighting for for 20 years. With one flip of a switch, we're going to get someone to pay for it and get it done within a real quick years. And I don't want to pass up on that opportunity and I hope you consider supporting them. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
All right, next person is Pauline Demiro. They should be in person.
One.
The next person is Maxie Lau Burke. And they're in, they're on Zoom. He's on mute, Maxime? Oh, Maxie, you can't hear me.
Looks like she's on.
Yeah.
That hurts.
Maxie, can you hear us? If you can, please begin your testimony.
All right, we'll move on to the next speaker.
Next speaker is Brian Hunt and they're in person.
Brian Hunt in person. All right, we'll move on.
Okay, Dirk McCall in there on Zoom.
Dirk McCall on Zoom.
Hello. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. My name is Dirk McCall de Paloma and I'm the Executive Director of the Sunnyside Shines Business Improvement District. Thank you to Borough President Donovan Richards for this opportunity to bring testimony. I'm here today to strongly support the proposal by Metropolitan Park to transform these 50 acres of asphalt parking around Citi Field into a new multi-use complex.
There's a Maxie and there's a Michelle. Maxie was the early one. The Michelle one is like a bit later.
So look, can you?
It might be the same one. Yeah.
Can you please mute yourself? Sorry. I'm sorry, Dirk.
Okay, okay. Thank you so much. Sunnyside is on the seven train and anything that happens here on this train impacts our community and our small businesses. Our merchants in Sunnyside are huge Mets fans and they're very excited for new opportunities to partner with the Mets, the Hard Rock team and other parts of the project. We're starting to sign them up as restaurant partners and we look forward to seeing a big economic impact. After COVIDs, our restaurants continue to hurt and opportunities like this project don't come along that often. And they're incredibly helpful to ensure the economic success of our restaurants and bars and bakeries here in Sunnyside to make certain that we keep our local residents engaged and employed. This plan that people have mentioned earlier is going to create 23,000 good-paying, unionized jobs. It's going to be built union. It's going to have a huge impact for the local economy. And it brings so many elements. It'll be wonderful for our borough and for the entire city. The Queens Food Hall, Hard Rock Hotel, the casino and a music venue. Each of these alone would be a reason to support this huge investment of $8 billion into Queens. But but combined together, they make support for this project imperative for our future. This project will finally transform an underutilized eyesore into something shining and magical. It'll improve our transportation infrastructure. It'll connect Citi Field and areas surrounding it into our bike trails and walking paths, opening it up to the public instead of being an underutilized parking facility only used a few times a year. Without Steve Cohen and the Metropolitan Park proposal, nothing will happen at this site. It's been an eyesore for years and this is our opportunity to change that. All of the elements of this proposal are critical to the overall success of the plan and we are honored to endorse it and we thank them for their contributions to Queens. Thank you for this opportunity to comment.
Thank you for your testimony.
All right, the next speaker is Teddy Tang and they're in person.
Hi, good morning, Mr. Borough President and everyone else. My name is Ted Tang. I'm here on behalf of the Taiwan Chamber of Commerce to affirm our strong support for the Metropolitan Park project. So you've heard ad nauseam today about all the job creation will create the economic growth, of course, you know, the increased foot traffic to the area, helping our small businesses thrive better. I also wanted to add a couple of small things that's kind of glossed over. As we know, the cost of living, cost of childcare is increasingly dramatically making it hard for families to choose between a dual-income family versus having that necessary childcare. I remember when I first met you, we were fighting for beacon programs in Queens that hasn't gotten better easier. So with Metro- So with Metropolitan Park, we know they not only provide jobs, but also amenities and infrastructures to alleviate some of these burdens, right? Uh, this development offers real opportunities for families who are struggling to balance work and childcare costs by creating a job-rich environment and more importantly, contributing to the local economy in a way that sustains uh, family life with their programs, including childcare on say and whatnot. Um, I guess that you've heard all the good things about Metropolitan Park, but I did want to address some of the negative things that was said earlier, uh, in terms of the Phoenix Park. Um, now Sully is really too polite to address them. Uh, so Sully, I got this. Uh, let's remember, the land is already under a lease. It is not open, free space land that you can build willy-nilly on. Okay, it, it is not a threat. It is reality. The only way this site will ever be anything more than that asphalt for the next eighty odd years is if it works within this lease and we have a developer who wants to do good and build within this lease. Okay, uh, the bareback proposal really lacks any basic answers. When you do any land proposal, project idea, the basics you need is where? Where's it going to be built? How are you going to fund it? How will it impact the community? None of these answers are being answered. Um, in fact, at one point, um, during another hearing I attended, I asked the Phoenix Park individuals, where, how do they plan to get past this lease? They said something along the lines of building a ramp to build on top of the proposed space in midair pretty much. I don't know how that's going to work, but it's a fundamental lack of understanding land use laws, fundamental lack of understanding air rights and fundamental lack of reality and laws of physics. So I'm not sure where Phoenix Park is going. Um, I really want to remind everyone, let's not assume the loud minority represents the majority. The re, we, when, when they had the gaming proposal, it passed significantly. That means the people of Queens wants this gaming facility here. They want the opportunities. They want the benefits that are here. Okay, we need that here. I just want to remind you that the idea of saying no and no and no, just to any type of development, any type of progress is not a strategy. It's just plain stagnation. And we really need to work with Metropolitan Park to make this a reality and to help the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
All right, the next person is Bishop Taylor, who is in person.
Sorry, I owe you. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Bishop Mitchell Taylor. I'm the co-founder and CEO of Urban Upbound, a nonprofit that was developed to break cycles of poverty in public housing neighborhoods and low-income communities. Uh, I want to say, uh, before I get started, don't lose this. I'm reminded of February two thousand nineteen, uh, February eighteenth, two thousand nineteen Valentine's Day. We had the opportunity with fourteenth, right? Fourteenth, Valentine's Day, right?
I won't tell your wife.
Huh? Yeah, don't tell me. And don't take that off my time, him interrupting me here, okay?
We're going to put this on your calendar from now.
Yeah, so Valentine's Day, uh, was supposed to be a great time. We were going out to dinner. We had plans and whatnot. And I woke up in the morning and found out that Amazon had pulled out of Queens. The largest retailer was moving right next door to the largest public housing development in the United States of America. We thought that we were on the come up. But we had people that were naysayers, similar to what I'm hearing, centered around this development that will change Queens forever. I'll say it again. Don't lose this. Now, all of the benefits everyone has so eloquently, uh, uh, spoken about. I don't have to talk about that. Let's talk about this, Bill. And Cheryl, if you're still here, you know, we have an opportunity now to participate in the economy. We're getting economic justice. We're getting environmental justice and we're getting community revitalization. Something that Queens needs and this particular part of Queens deserves. Thank you again.
Thank you for your testimony.
All right, the next person is Jose De Jesus. They should be in person.
Jose De La, De Jesus. All right, one.
Um, okay, the next person is Courtney Worrell. And they are in person.
I think they were on Zoom.
Zoom.
They're not showing on Zoom though.
Okay, they, they might have left then.
Okay.
Oh, there she is.
Hi, uh, hi, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Great. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me, um, Borough President. It's great to see you. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person. I'm the president of the Waterfront Alliance. We are the city's leader in climate resilience, waterfront issues and all kinds of recreation related to water and other parks in the city. And this morning we had a meeting with, uh, representatives from our federal offices, from Senator Jill Lebrant's offices, office, uh, Nidia Velazquez, as well as, uh, Congressman Goldman to talk about the impact of the election on New York City, on the presidential election, which I think plays a role in a bit of my testimony this morning. So Waterfront Alliance is, um, a nonprofit. We've, uh, we've been in, working in the New York region for over seventeen years. And we are in full support of the Metropolitan Park project. We've been working for over a year to study the climate change issues impacting Flushing Meadows Corona Park. At the home to the stadium and the home to the future project. And the park is one of the most impacted by climate change in the entire park system of New York City. And because of that, it requires a lot of attention. It's going to be affected by flooding substantially. It's a very low-lying area as well as heat. And the future of Queens and the opportunities that the park provides is really tied to the future of Flushing Meadows. We are in support of the project for many reasons, but one reason is the opportunity that the project provides in potential support and funding long-term for improvements that are desperately needed at the park. We are supported by Congresswoman Meng as well as the Metropolitan Park team in conducting this early study, which is revealing many, many opportunities for, for improvements at the park. But these opportunities cannot come without public-private partnership for funding. There is, and this is what ties into my me, my meeting this morning with the, with the congressional offices in the Senator's office. There is very little prospect of federal or state funding coming for climate improvements to New York City, especially to its parks. And the reason for that is that the little money that will come will be prioritized in the communities where property can be saved immediately, where homes can be saved and businesses. Parks, they are so important. We all know they're so important, but unfortunately, they're not going to be put at the top of the list. So that's why it is so important for us to see this project as the greatest opportunity that Queens has for public-private partnership to make improvements at Flushing Meadows that were, will improve the park and make sure that it's there in fifty years in all of its forms. And that it's improved so that it can support the community and provide all of the many community benefits that will be there and can be there if it is supported and invested in. We also want to address the fact that that Phoenix Meadows as an opportunity is a good one. However, we just don't see it as a realistic opportunity by any chance. And I think that the recent uh, presidential election is, is another addition to that real concern that any thinking that Phoenix Meadows is a viable opportunity is really just idealistic at best. There is almost no opportunity for that type of a project to move forward, especially if you compare all of the public investments that New York City needs to make in its many, many other parks other than Central Park, the major parks in the other boroughs that are in desperate need of, need of improvements. To improve one parking lot is just not going to rise to the top of the list for the Parks Department or for incoming or future, uh, mayoral administrations. So we really want to take a pragmatic, realistic approach to what the opportunities are. And we also want to say that we're very, very supportive and, and heartened by the incredible work that the Metropolitan Park team has done to identify the climate threats that are facing the park that will play a role in their design of Metropolitan Park. Heat, flooding, you name it. They have looked at all of the aspects of it. It's some of the highest quality work we've seen from a public, uh, from a private developer in a very long time. So I just wanted to say again how, how much Waterfront Alliance supports this project and we're really looking forward to talking about the opportunities and for the neighborhood to enjoy this new park space. And that this will be park space resilient to the effects of climate change in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony.
Morning, um, Maxie Lau is about to speak. She said she got her mic back on, but being.
Can you repeat the name? Okay.
Hello, good morning, um, Borough President and everyone else that's there today. Um, my name is Maxie Lau O'Keefe. I am the owner of Maxie's Noodle One and Two located in Flushing, Queens. Um, I am a small business owner, um, I just started five years ago. And Queens has been, um, the home, you know, for my restaurant for the last five years. And, um, I, you know, opened, excuse me, uh, right before the pandemic. So, um, you know, doing a lot of community work, um, you know, since I opened the restaurant, um, it's, it's been incredible, um, the amount of support, um, with Queens Chamber and, um, just all around Flushing. Um, and I just want to say that, um, it wouldn't mean a lot, um, to Flushing. And I would say that, you know, from all of the other restaurant owners that I spoke with, um, when, you know, the Metropolitan Park will be eventually built, it would mean, you know, it just more, um, income and more people visiting Queens, um, that would, you know, drive, um, a lot more, you know, tourists and everyone into Queens, which is a win-win for everyone. It's not just obviously to Flushing, it's all around Queens, right? Because it is built, you know, kind of right in the middle of us. Um, so, you know, I, you know, obviously spoke with a lot of my, um, uh, restaurant, um, friends, owners and, you know, just, you know, asking you know, what they would think about, you know, if they support this project or not. And I can tell you from the amount of people that I have spoken with, everyone is definitely in support. And the fact that because they are willing to build out a, um, you know, like a, a, a food hall and having, you know, introducing just different types of restaurants into this project. It would mean so much, you know, and just like everybody else was speaking about, you know, instead of just us going to a Mets game, right? And there is nothing else to do after. But once this project is built, there will be so many other opportunities for, you know, tourists to come visit, for just the locals to come and it'll be like, you know, like a hangout spot. Um, this, this will mean a lot. And, you know, it's, you know, like everyone's, you know, most of you will say it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And this is something that, um, I really, really hope that you consider and, you know, passing this project on because it will mean a lot to us and to the whole entire community of Flushing and, you know, especially to Queens. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony.
Um, the next person is Yashica Wilson. In person.
Wilson. All right, next.
Next person is Ariella Rothstein. And they're on Zoom.
Ariella Roth, Rothstein.
He's on mute, Ariella?
She's there, she's.
Ariella. Give it ten more seconds.
Is she present?
Yeah, she's on Zoom, but.
But muted?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on.
Uh, Jamie Young, they're on Zoom.
Jamie Young.
Will you please unmute Jamie?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, um, thank you so much.
One second, I'm sorry, I was waiting for this. Hello?
All right, we got.
See my comments to, my comment time to, uh, Rebecca Pryor, who's in the room?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, so it's, it sounds like Jamie yielded their time. So we'll move on to Ariella Rothstein. When you're ready, please begin your testimony.
Okay, um, thank you all for having me. I'm a school librarian in Queens and, um, uh, calling on my lunch break and I'm calling in opposition to this plan, um, uh, for a number of reasons. Um, primarily, I'm concerned about just the uneven community benefits, the support for a billionaire to become wealthier, um, with very, very few community benefits. Yes, we have a new train station and partial parkland, but there is an alternative, um, for the entire public space to remain, public space to remain space that addresses the climate crisis we're in, that is, um, open and friendly for the primarily undocumented and immigrant communities surrounding the neighborhood, which left them apart for over fifteen years. Um, and, uh, I just, you know, expect more from Queens. I know, um, we prioritize the benefits of our community and this plan. Um, yes, it looks fancy and nice of having all those benefits, but of what are the costs benefiting? Um, for years and years and years who will be benefiting? Yes, there will be some union jobs created, um, but that's not the same thing as open and free parkland and park access that all union members and other members of the community um, that undocumented residents can benefit from. And during this political time, I just ask politicians to think, um, you know, whose side are we standing on? The billionaires who elected the person who fought to become president or the people of Queens, um, who primarily are concerned on how they're going to support their families and having a free and open public space. Having some protection against climate change is extremely important. So I encourage you, um, to vote no on this plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
All right, um, Jamie Young, oh.
Jamie, um, we're going back to Jamie Young.
I believe Jamie yielded their time to Rebecca Pryor, who is, is Rebecca in the room?
She's not here. Rebecca Pryor on Zoom? She's on Zoom? Okay, so we go to Rebecca Pryor.
Oh, let's see, yeah, she's on Zoom.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Um, hi, I'm Rebecca Pryor. I'm the Executive Director with the Guardians of Flushing Bay. Thank you so, so much for the opportunity to speak. Um, and I'm sorry I can't be in the room today. Uh, we submitted comments to the Borough President a couple of weeks ago, and I'm just going to give a verbal overview of those comments now. So the land use app, um, actions that are on the table for the ULP application enable a roughly four million square foot redevelopment project across about seventy-seven acres of public parkland. Um, this redevelopment includes a casino, a hotel and a convention center. Ultimately, in reviewing the draft environmental impact statement and the ULP application, Guardians believes that the impacts of the project are so profound that we are recommending to the Borough President that you vote no on the application, vote no unless modified, or if you choose to vote yes, then vote yes with recommendations. And I'm going to list a couple of those key modifications and recommendations now. So the first is to vote no unless the project is modified to require an acre-for-acre replacement of parkland. It currently does not require this, um, and is seen both in the application as well as in, um, the the alienation legislation that's, um, been introduced. And this acre-for-acre replacement of parkland is strongly recommended in New York State's Parkland Alienation Handbook. The second is to, um, ensure that the applicants conduct a meaningful study of indirect residential and commercial displacement. As has been previously mentioned, their current study of displacement only follows seekers' minimum requirement of a quarter-mile radius around the site. This means that they're only studying a couple of census tracts in Corona. They don't study displacement in Flushing at all. They don't study displacement in Jackson Heights, East Elmhurst or Elmhurst. And we can see from the racial equity report that the applicants were required to submit that the neighborhoods, especially of Corona, Elmhurst and Flushing are at the highest displacement risk in the city for potential, um, for potential, um, residential and commercial displacement. So it is so critical that we understand the potential impacts of this project before we approve it. And Guardians believes that a project cannot possibly be climate resilient if it potentially displaces the communities that it is meant to protect and make more resilient. The next modification is to vote no unless it is modified to include the development and planning recommendations included in the Phoenix Meadows Vision Plan, which is meant to be just that, a vision plan. And, uh, inspiration for what could be possible if we were to really invest in our public parkland. So a couple of those recommendations include no net gain of parking. Right now, the project proposal doubles the amount of parking on site. Um, and the other planning recommendation is to require a hundred percent stormwater capture on site, which the project currently does not. Um, another, uh, modification is to include a just, transparent, and equitable community benefits agreement that is locktight and financially, um, commensurate with the impacts involved in this project. Right now, as I mentioned, we don't understand the indirect displacement impact, impacts. So how can we say what the financial impacts of this project really will be on the communities, um, most directly impacted by it? And finally, the last is to vote no unless the project, um, is modified to prohibit a casino on the site. Thank you so much for hearing, uh, our testimony, and we really appreciate your careful consideration, um, as you vote on this project.
Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, the next speaker is John Long, who's supposed to be in person.
John. All right, move on.
The next person is Reggie Piggy, and then person.
Just state your name for the record.
Yes, good morning, Borough President. My name is Reggie Piggy. Um, owner and founder of Piggy's Group Solutions, Building Communities and Building Futures. Um, as a resident, uh, well, first of all, I am in full support of the, uh, project. But as a direct resident, I live in Dory Miller, which is directly adjacent to the project. Let's talk about, circle back, uh, to the environmental impact. Being that we live there, we do live in the actual urban oven. Dory Miller is between the parking space and it's also between LaGuardia. So therefore, we've already looked at the numbers. So it's taxing us not only because it's a hotter environment, but it also impacts us economically because it raises our, in the summer times, like your, your air conditioning is working harder for the, uh, entrepreneurs and the businesses, everything is costing us at a higher rate. What this transformation will offer our community is it will reduce that, it will help with respiratory issues because that is also a significant thing that's going on in that immediate area of Corona. And it's going to be beneficial to all those in the community, particularly children at large who su- suffer from respiratory issues. Having the green space, the trees, the plants. The thing that this project has done, they have taken these issues into account and they have made the provisions and have the foresight and the vision to take those things into account. It's not just going to be a place to hang out, but it's going to be long-term, it's going to make this a destination where people are going to want to come, where we do suffer from the traffic because we're there. But the stadium, we suffer from the traffic from U S T A. And then it's maybe impacted as well with the tenant, I mean, with the soccer. With the things that are proposed, it's going to relieve some of that stress in the immediate community. We suffer from that from Dory Miller. If there's a Mets game, generally, people generally want to come and park where our neighbors park. This will solve that problem. It will create a relief, it will create a benefit for us in the community. Lastly, those who are against this project, the things that I've heard are not rooted or substantiated in facts. These are things that they are just throwing stuff up against the wall, hoping that it sticks, and then defeat this project. I'm asking you to vote yes on this because it's not only going to benefit environmentally, but job opportunities, business opportunities, and entrepreneurial opportunities in the community. And lastly, those, the women that just talked about in displacement, there's no displacement that's going to occur from the, from this particular project. So I thank you for allowing me to speak, and, uh, let's please vote yes on this.
Thank you for your testimony.
All right, our next speaker is Pastor Patrick Henry. He should be in person.
Preaching today?
Well, I got my preacher walk. Good evening, good, um, good afternoon, Borough President. Uh, appreciate your great leadership in our borough and doing a great job. And I'm very much in favor of this metropolitan, uh, process and plan for economic development for our community. As you know, my church lives right in the heart of the zip code. And, uh, we provide for families, seven hundred families per, every week. And it's interesting that most people on that family line are not just people unemployed, there's people who are employed. But they have to make a choice between have food on their table or pay their rent. I heard the lady talk about displacement, they're not displaced because of a commercial building project. They're displaced because their economy cannot afford living in their community. And because of that, that is why we are, this wonderful project brings hope. It brings a lift. When eighteen point three percent of our people in my zip code are in poverty, we need a lift. When, when considered poverty level, twenty some, twenty thousand dollars or twenty-five thousand dollars a year that people make, they need a lift. This wonderful project provides a lift economically for those who live in my community and those who surround my building on every Saturday morning. There is a statement in Hebrew, in the Hebrew text, the people who walk in darkness have seen a great light. We've been walking in darkness for a long time. The light has come. And the light is going to be a light that lift us from poverty to possibility and provide home, good, uh, quality living for so many who needs the opportunity to have quality living. So I encourage you, I beg you, I plead you, I appeal to you that you consider and that you will move forward in supporting this project that will give a lift to those who've been walking in darkness. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
All right, the next speaker is Christina Said. They're in person.
Dana, all righty, well, virtual, second she's virtual.
She's not virtual.
Okay, we'll move on.
Um, the next person is Irene Silk. Um, they are in person.
Irene?
Irene.
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 All right, next.
Next person, Alan Sherman, should be in person.
Then his full uniform today.
Okay.
Say your name for the record and pull the mic, pull the mic down.
Um, my name's Alan Sherman. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of the Honorable Borough President. My name is Alan Sherman, and I have been a resident of Queens since nineteen sixty-three. Many of you know me for my love of, for Queens and my work to support many organizations in our great borough. I have seen many changes to our borough over the years, some good, some bad. I feel Metropolitan Park would be a great addition to the borough of Queens. The nineteen sixty-four, sixty-five New York World's Fair, which I do remember, had a theme, there's a great, big, beautiful tomorrow. Metropolitan Park is a great, big, beautiful tomorrow, the next generation. Home to both New York City airports that bring tourists to our great city, Metropolitan Park will keep these tourists in Queens. We leave Queens for other parts of New York City, where, why leave Queens for other parts of New York City when you have amazing tourist sites and restaurants right here? Any Metropolitan Park to a neighborhood that already includes Citi Field, the U S Open, a proposed soccer stadium, along with museums, theaters, zoos, will make the area a one-stop attraction that will bring thousands of jobs and tourist dollars to Queens. Forget Manhattan, Brooklyn, the Bronx, and Staten Island.
I agree.
Queens is the go-to borough. I urge you to see the vision of a great, big, beautiful tomorrow and approve Metropolitan Park. I speak with, excuse me for saying this, Mark Levine, the Manhattan Borough President. We have a little joke between us. He always says it's Manhattan and the four outer boroughs. I remind him, it's Queens and the four outer boroughs. I always correct him. Let's keep Queens in first place, just like the Mets next season. Let's go Mets, let's go Queens, and let's go Metropolitan Park.
Thank you. Still in that line.
All right, the next person is Howard Wong. They are in person.
Howard Wong, all right, next, Wong, Howard Wong. All right, next.
Um, Michael Hurwitz. They are on Zoom. Please unmute Michael.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good afternoon, and thank you, Mr. Borough President, for the opportunity to speak this afternoon. My name's Michael Hurwitz. I'm a resident of Jackson Heights, a father of two teenagers, a regular user of Flushing Meadows Corona Park, and someone who has spent the last twenty-three years turning dilapidated open space into thriving centers of community activity. And it's for that reason that I urge you to vote in favor of Metropolitan Park. My approach to this project is that it is one of essential transportation and green infrastructure, as well as climate resiliency. Project builds a state-of-the-art, accessible subway station, safe walkways, protected bike lanes, and further connects Queens to its waterfront. It builds vital green space and parkland in a borough that disproportionately lacks open space. And that green space is the front line of climate resiliency, providing a crucial barrier to flooding threats, which we all know are happening more frequently and are more devastating with each occurrence. While it's that infrastructure that motivates my support, the way the project organizers have thought about incentivizing hotel guests to discover the diversity of Queens neighborhoods and to support mom-and-pop restaurants and shops and cultural sites shows a thoughtful intentionalism about how to leverage resources in a real way. And when I think about the alternative, which is cement, flooding, inferior and inaccessible public transportation, and an elevated heat index, and to be clear, I have never heard anyone present a viable alternative plan to develop this space. To simply say no does not seem like an option. And lastly, there will be over twenty-five hundred units of a hundred percent affordable housing built across the street to this project. Failing to develop that cement condemns nearly ten thousand of our Queens neighbors to the aforementioned future of second-class infrastructure and further isolation. So I truly appreciate your consideration of this, encourage you to vote in favor, and wish you all the rest of a wonderful Thursday. Thanks so much.
Thank you for your testimony.
All right, the next person is Michael Dinowski, and they are on Zoom. Please unmute Mike. All right, I guess we'll move on.
I don't know, he's there, right?
Oh, yeah, he's, oh, he's on mute, okay.
Michael?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Let's see, uh, lifelong, uh, resident, well, Jackson Heights resident, lifelong union member, and uh, Trade Center respondent injured. So I remember when I heard that the air is clean. And we know what happened. Uh, this is an investor-driven project, and I think the city should drive a harder bargain with the, uh, investors here. I have a long memory, I remember when, uh, uh, let's see, Trump links failed. Uh, there's no talk about this project failing, and who gets to hold the bag? Infrastructure will be built, and there is no funding, ongoing funding that I see. Uh, the, uh, gentleman Sullivan, who, who were speaking as if not proposed project, but our place. So I'm suspicious as to whether this is a ready-to-do deal. Um, Hellgate, New York City uncovered confidential documents. I urge investigative people to get involved with this because, um, there's, this is a little too monolithic. Actually, I think, uh, having only one purveyor of music is monopolistic. The, uh, Hellgate, uh, Hellgate did quite a good piece on it. I urge everybody listening to, uh, uh, investigate because, uh, air quality will definitely deteriorate. And, uh, being injured from air quality being deteriorated, uh, I'm also of, um, gambling is an addiction, there's no getting around it, there's no treating it, that's what's funding this place. So, uh, between the air quality degradation and, uh, Robert Moses', um, uh, sociopathic, uh, steamrolling over communities, this is, um, once, once, once union jobs are, are done, construction, uh, there's, here's all this stuff, city, you take care of it. That's going to be more tax money out of, out of the pocket. Jackson Heights did not have a park, so they converted a street to a park. It, it's an insult, and it's much better to, uh, have, uh, the city drive a much harder bargain. Uh, have Hard Rock be, work with the controller, controller owns it, it's city property, and bring in other, other music, music promoters as well, get some competition in here. That's all I have to say right now. Vote against it.
Thank you for your testimony.
All right, the next person is George Sukuzene, and they are on Zoom.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is George Sukusheni. I'm here today to share my testimony comments about the new casino proposal being considered here today. As, uh, a New Yorker that was born and raised here, and as I can remember very much in the city, um, I feel this proposal will not benefit as much as I, I would hope it would. Uh, I remember very vividly, uh, Father Thomas for the, our lead of Sarus Parish over in Underford Street and, I believe it's Thirty-seventh Avenue. Um, this father rallied the entire community and all the churchgoers to protest against, uh, the new developments that are happening right adjacent to the tennis center in Flushing Meadow Park. And while he did an enormous amount of community, uh, building and, um, you know, protests, um, our voices did not get heard, um, the development of the Chase Center and all these other new complexes were made there. Uh, and now we're even losing even more parkland, and it's devastating. I think our park here in Flushing Meadow Park should be, should be an outstanding park, um, possibly even better than Central Park, because if you want to go to a park, uh, over to Central, if you want to go to Central Park, you have to take a train. Uh, and, and we're living here in Queens, we should make sure this is a park that everyone goes to, that we're proud about this park. And now that our commute is going, uh, every single year, um, we're losing more of that park. Um, I also want to give props to, uh, the Thirty-Fifth Avenue Coalition, they made an Open Street Initiative there. Um, and their community events have been stellar. I hope that, um, with, uh, the events that are happening, that Open Street Initiative and Coalition could also. I hope that, um, with, uh, the events that are happening, that open street initiative and coalition could also possibly be seen here. To engage the community that are also a part of, uh, the community surrounding the cities that are around here. Um, and, um, I also am very much aware of the implications of having a casino here. Um, like somebody said before, there are definitely some drawbacks of having this, uh, definitely addiction, right? So I'm hoping if we do in fact go, uh, go with creating this casino, sorry. That we go, uh, with this casino, that there is some, um, nonprofit organization that is intervening inside of the casino so that. We are in fact taking care of our residents here. Um, and there are, they are also reporting for individuals who are at risk, right? Yes, we won't be reporting on job postings and, you know, how many people are getting jobs, but also like. You know, how many people are getting addicted in, in casinos, that is very much an important metric to also be tracking. When we're going forward with this initiative so that we are aware about, um, when, uh, city and government officials should be taking. Uh, much more, uh, interventions and taking care of the matter. If it at some point becomes a, a huge problem and we, we don't want it to come to a point where like, um, it affects the entire community and we can't go back. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
All right, our next speaker is. Maria Fiero and they should be in person.
Maria? Not here.
Not here.
Okay, um. My next person is Greg Coles. In person?
Don't see him. Okay, next.
Next person is Lois Lee. In person?
Lee? Lois Lee? No.
Okay, next person is Brian Lee. And they're on Zoom.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, everybody, I'll make this short and sweet, my name is Brian Lee. And I am a vocational school owner, uh, in Manhattan actually, uh, but most of our. Students are enrolled from your, uh, borough, uh, Queens. And so. I want you to vote yes to this. Uh, Metropolitan Park. Cause not only will it increase enrollment for schools by, but once my students graduate. They have twenty three thousand jobs with toward to. And certainly other opportunities that will. Um, yeah, I've been changes, uh, to small businesses and like I said before, uh, schools such as mine. So, uh, please vote yes to this and thank you for having me.
Thank you for your testimony.
All right, the next person is Robert Dorsky. And they should be in person.
Good afternoon, uh, Borough President, fellow attendees, thank you for having me here today. I would like to state that I am a small business owner from Flushing, Queens, so this will impact my business in a positive way. Touching on, uh, a previous speaker, Maxi LaOkeef of Maxi Noodles. We've had discussions amongst ourselves, other business owners, and we agree in Flushing, this will be the best for Queens. I'm in full support of this. On a personal note, I happen to live in a sage house next to Dory Miller. A few blocks from this project's happening, so this will greatly impact us. We see how Corona is and based on what Sully's telling us, we see what this will become. I'm from Queens, we have two beautiful airports bringing millions of tourists every year. JFK, LaGuardia, why are they not staying in Queens? Why are they going to Manhattan? We call it the city, if you're from New York City. Why are they not spending their money here in the best borough? In New York City. Thank you very much, Metropolitan Park, let's go Mets.
Thank you for your testimony.
All right, next person is Winston Lau, they should be in person.
Borough President Richards, um, you know me better as the president of the Taiwanese American Association of New York. But I am Winston Lau, I'm here on behalf of myself and like minded individuals of the Dragon Boat Community of New York. So one of the things that we've been talking about that Sully has touched upon, that the waterfront alliance has touched upon is access to the waterways. Um. The World's Fair Marina Pier number one has been aging for the last eighty years since the last World's Fair. And it's deteriorating very quickly. Last week, we received notice that they're shutting access to the piers. To the Dragon Boat Community as of April of next year because the piers failed safety inspections. Now, we knew of this, this has been ongoing for many years now, we've always been told you may lose access, you may lose access, you may lose access, it has finally happened. Earlier this year, Sully invited us to see the development, to, to share with him our concerns and. For me and members of my community. We only want to see the piers fixed. And if this is the project that gets us the funding to fix those piers, it's a mutual benefit. Not only to keeping the Dragon Boat Community in New York City at those piers because that has been home for the Dragon Boat Community since it was founded. And we are the largest, if not oldest Dragon Boat Communities in the country that has produced many championship teams. But it also mutually benefits the transient boat traffic that we want to bring back, the ferries that we want to bring back for the games. The boat traffic that comes in for the games, for the entertainment value. So, am I selfish? Yes. I'm looking at this project as a source of funding. That they can put into the New York City Parks Department for World's Fair Marina to rebuild Pier Number One. And like I said before, last week, we, we received notice that. As of April next year, we will no longer have access to Pier One. All the teams that have boats there are now struggling, are now trying to find a alternative solution. To our twenty twenty five season, which will be an exciting one because there's so many international competitions happening that a lot of teams are looking forward to. And the first thing I did, once I received that notice, was I reached out to Sully's team. And even though I don't know if. Whether or not the project goes through or not, the fact that Sully's team's willing to take a look at the request, to take a look at our concern. To engage me and members, like minded members of this, of my Dragon Boat Community that support the project. In even now, taking a look at resources and options for next season. A short term proposal, the fact that they're willing to take that step makes us want to support them even more. So I want to thank Sully and I want to thank Borough President Richard for giving me the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, and we're gonna follow up one night pier conversation because Parks didn't notify us of that. Um, so we, okay, so we will follow up, uh, deputy, if you can make sure we follow up and have Michael follow up. We should definitely be in touch with them one night. And we don't need them to actually fix that, so we could. It's two hundred million dollars and Flushing Meadows grown apart right now. And we're working hard to get the Parks Department to move on a lot of the projects that are currently under books, so we'll follow up on that. Um, all right, we'll go to Sully.
All right, next person is Olga Itzel and they should be in person.
Olga? Olga? Next.
Okay, next person is Tammy Rose, um, they are on Zoom.
Tammy William, Tammy Rose. Okay, thirty seven.
It keeps unmuting me.
Oh, Tammy, I, we hear you.
Okay, great, sorry. Hello, everyone, my name is Tammy Rose. Um, thank you for allowing me to speak, Borough President. Um, I live in Jackson Heights, I'm a mom, I'm a veteran, I'm a childhood educator, I'm a small business owner, most importantly, I'm a lover of Queens. I'm here today to express my strong support for Metropolitan Park. In full transparency, my company, Little Friends, has provided and may in the future provide, uh, Queens. Future consulting services with respect to the design of on onsite childcare facility. The childcare facility is the reason I am here fighting for this project. When I first heard about this project, I was very ambivalent and then I went to the first town hall. And in that town hall, I heard about the twenty four or, or twenty three thousand jobs. And my first thought was, that's awesome, but who's taking care of the kids? And then my second thought was fifty acres of unused asphalt, Queens has to do better. Ever, after having multiple conversations with the team, I knew this project was exactly what we needed in Queens and in our community. To be able, to be able to offer childcare to the workers of this project, not only in early childhood. But offer after school programming, which includes sports, music and a wraparound schedule to accommodate the working parents' schedules of parents. This would be transformative in Queens and transformative for the families that I represent. No one else in Queens is doing this and it would be such an asset. To me and the hundreds of families that I represent, childcare is one of the most positive community benefits of this project. Which include, which would also include a new public park for the kids to play. An improved train station for the families to have access to and local hiring that will employ the members of my community, which include Jackson Heights, East Elm Hurst, Corona. So thank you Borough President for allowing me to speak, again, I want to express my, express my strong support of this project. And like all our strong leaders, Tom Costa, Reggie, Pastor Young, Bishop and those that spoke before me. I support it for those many reasons, but also for the childcare. So, again, thank you and we have an opportunity to put Queens first and our kids will thank us for generations to come. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for your testimony.
All right, next person is Erica Ford.
Good day.
Good day.
Um, how you doing Borough President?
Great.
Thank you for having me here, thank you Mets team for having me here. Thank you for community for having me here, now let me stop, but, um. I'm strongly in support of the Metropolitan Park, I think that it is not a park right now. And it becoming a park would be a good situation for the community. It is not a park right now and so the idea of, you know, matching parkland. There's no parkland to really match, it's just a definition and in terms of the work that I do in terms of violence prevention and making peace a lifestyle. Have an opportunity for people to go, people to grow, people to engage. And I just heard about the childcare, that's like a win, win, win for our community, um, and it's not just jobs, but it's a sense of engagement, right? The, the Metropolitan Team engaged deeply with the community and so, um, and that is what impressed me, that is what I like. Uh, it's not just about making a billionaire or a millionaire or whatever he is richer, um, although I will take some of his money, but, um. I'm sorry, preparation is not right, but, um, it's about, we have to grow. In order for us to grow, we have to invest and we have to grow. We have to address all of the concerns, yes, we're not going to address every concern because that never happens. But in the growth, when it happens and when it's in the process, then all things can continue to grow and begin, continue to address. If it never happens, it can't be addressed and we can't grow. And so I've hoped that you would, you know, vote yes, um, the Peace Doctor is going to be on site to make peace a lifestyle at your Metropolitan Park.
All right, thank you.
All right, next person is Annette Gill. They should be in person.
Annette Gill? No.
Okay, um, next person is Crystal Rivera, in person?
Officially, good afternoon at this point, Borough President. Um, thank you for having me, I'm Crystal Rivera, a resident of Richmond Hill, I'm a member of the Community Board Nine, um, Committee. I am the president, my local PTA, I'm not here in that official capacity or speaking on behalf of any of those organizations today. I am speaking as a Queens resident, a mom to four children that are going through the public schools in Queens, a small business owner. Um, I'm married to a member of the FDNY who's third generation Queens and a diehard Mets fan, let's go Mets. And, um, you know, I mentioned all of that because. I think we need to speak and I'm glad someone spoke about children, the future in parents and, and families, like. There are many families in my neighborhood in Richmond Hill who are leaving, they're going to New Jersey, our schools are under enrolled. And I think that projects like Metropolitan Park, which I am in support of. Offer families in Queens more opportunity across the board, I don't think we need to talk just about economics because the jobs are great. You know, the investment in communities is great, but as a parent who wants to enjoy living in this city. We pay a lot of money to live here and there's not always the amenitization for your families and so in Queens, I think that's hard to find. We travel, I go to, we were mentioning Two Trees Properties in Domino Park. I go there with my family because we can enjoy the day with my mother who's eighty and my kids who are two, right? There's not places like that in Queens and I think we need these kinds of places. They drive great economics, but they also just offer a place for gathering and I think that's what people need in a post-COVID world and what Queens needs in general. I'll also say as my small business, I worked in real estate mixed use properties, I spent ten years at Industry City. Five years at the Brooklyn Navy Yard, I worked on Pier Fifty Seven and I've worked all over the country in different projects. And I've been waiting for a project in Queens like this, like this is very exciting as a resident to say. Finally, like we have something here that people have everywhere else. So for me, I think what, um, Bishop was saying earlier, that, um. You can't say no, right? Like this is the kind of project we can't let go, this is a huge investment, eight billion dollars, I wrote down one billion and I was like, wait, eight billion dollars? Um, this is the kind of stuff we need for our neighborhoods and I think that this team has done a great job of addressing the concerns. And that's just a part of the process, like the, um, Peace Doctor was just saying, right? This is about, not everyone's going to be happy, but you're heard and there's a solution to move forward. So I am very much in support and I'm so glad I waited to talk today, thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony.
All right, next person is Howard Wong, they're back on Zoom.
Hi, can, can you, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, my name is Howard, um, uh, and I have lived in Forest Hills for over twenty years and I actually live right near the Flushing Corona Park. Um, and there is no question that this project is an attempt to steal public parkland by building it. And this hearing shows us exactly why people are disgusted about politics. Because we have elected officials who have promised to protect the people then turn around and become billionaires lobbyists. And why did Stephen Cohen donated one point five million dollars to our current mayor? Why did he donate two hundred thirty five thousand dollars to the State Democratic Party? Because the casino will make over two billion dollars annually. And a lot of these organizations whom I have worked for collaborated in the past. Are, you know, selling out the community for a few pennies and dimes. They're given some sort of promises that they're going to have programs. And now we're going to have addiction, addiction problems it within our community. And as an Asian American, we know far too well how casinos and gambling can destroy families. And, you know, Danny Drum was saying. Um, you know, it's, it's that we have faced addictions before, um, you could gamble online, um, you could, uh. You, it, you, I'm sorry, I, it's, it's just so infuriating that our politicians. Have degraded themselves so much that they're selling parkland, giving up parkland to billionaires. And let us not forget, we have two major stadiums in the area, but our park remains to be dilapidated. I've used the bathroom, mixes tennis court, uh, they're, they're only repaid because they're used by the US Open annually. And none of it, none of the, 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 the bridge, the, the broadwalk has never been fixed. The park has been dilapidated for many, many years. So there is no reason why our public land should be given to a billionaire so he can make two billion more dollars. If he wants to fix the park, he has over twenty to thirty billion dollars in his own assets. So I believe I, so I, I've made my point clear that I stand opposed to this project, thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony.
All right, next person is Karen Wayne, they're in person.
Good afternoon, Borough President, and thank you for offering me the opportunity to speak here. My name is Karen Wang. I'm here on behalf of Hamilton Madison House in supporting the Metropolitan Park Project. This is a transformative initiative bringing year-round entertainment, dining, open Greens Bay, and public transportation improvement or to create a lively destination that Queens residents can be part of. Um, I work as a program director at Hamilton Madison House, one of the New York City leading behavioral health clinics serving Asian American community. Myself is a credential alcoholism, substance abuse, and problem gambling counselor. Since nineteen eighty-three, our agency have operated an outpatient behavioral health clinic supporting, supportive housing at one oh, at Forty-Seven Avenue Corona, as well as a substance bill clinic and uh, substance use disorder and problem gambling clinic on Lower East Side, the first and only one of its kind in New York City and state. We serve the community across eleven Asian language and dialect. We are grateful for men, for the way of Metropolitan Park has engaged our organization and other local shareholder through numerous listening sessions. They have shown a sincere commitment to understand what the community want and needs to drive there. Through this project, we see a real chance to expand our clinic's search and deepen our impact. This development would allow us to create a stronger support network for the community member who desperately needs affordable, accessible mental health service and create, on connecting them with resource that they need and deserve. For this reason, job creation or academic and uh, community involvement and enhanced social service, we support the Metropolitan Park Project and encourage you to approve it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your testimony.
All right, next person is Yana Henriquez. Um, they should be in person.
Except that she was here. Oh, no, Yana, no, that's wrong. Yeah, she's not here.
Okay, um, next person is Aretha Wareham, in person.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, okay, let me just say, first thing, I'm Wareham W. I kept counting back, and I was like, oh, when they gonna call my name? You know, I thought you going from A to W, but Joe was switching every now and then.
Oh, no, we moved.
I solely support my own person. Oh. I solely support, I really support him. Uh, Mike, Jelissa, oh, everybody has been so engaging. I love the way the last person has, um, came up here and said, um, that is how you came to the community, and you engage and you become personally involved with, with any organization, because you know I serve on two nonprofit organizations, and he has, I yet not to call him, and he's not either come or sent somebody to us. I just want to bring up a story, and then you'll understand why. Uh, there was that project over there on Hundred and Fourteenth Street. I love to bring this up. You know, we had this developer come in, and he wanted to, it was a private cell, so they came in here and they wanted to build higher, they wanted to build bigger. Um, and they had to have the communities, um, on their side. Bad, they were terrible. They offered us a little small room somewhere, no parking. I remember sitting at the library, Langston Hughes Library, and most of the people who were there, a lot of it was packed. And they had this developer there, and he was talking about, um, uh, what they can build inside the place and everything, but no community benefits whatsoever, nothing, except for a small little room. So when Mike has come and sit in and he's talking about this big project and everything, and, and he's been more than, more than obliging with us with the community, period, with this project. And I went to the three sixty presentation, loved it, almost fainted because I'm looking in the three sixty surrounding here. It was gorgeous. I, I've lived in this community for forty or fifty years, and I remember going and go, going to Hundred and Eleven Street, going into the seventh train to get to the Dagon Ice Skating Rink that's over there. And I had not been over there for a while, and it was a mess then, too, at that time. It was dilapidated. It was terrible. But to go back there, maybe about a month ago, I went there because I went to Citi Field, and see it look the same. That is, that's terrible. That's, that's, we have not moved at all. So I'm just saying that that's a personal view for me, because everybody else who's been on his floor has spoken to exactly what I feel, too. I just wanted to let Mike know that, or them that, I appreciate the engagement that you give us, and I really, I support you fully. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
All right, the next person is Danny Meehan. They should be in person.
Damian, Darren.
Danny.
Danny?
Yes.
Annie.
Danny Meehan?
All right, not, not here.
Um, the next person is Matav Khan.
Darren, Danny, Darren.
Oh.
Okay. Darren Meeham is on Zoom.
No, that's another person. I'm talking about Danny, as in Daniel Meehan.
Okay, okay.
It's okay. But, um, next person is Matav Khan on Zoom.
Good morning, Mr. Borough President. Uh, I hope you and your family are doing well. Um, I'm here today opposed to the casino being built, and wanted to start off by saying that I might be younger than most folks in the room today, uh, but I'm old enough to remember when the Amazon deal was first announced, and the announcement alone impacting the housing market, leading to rent skyrocketing. I would know because as a tenant and working-class New Yorker myself, I check websites like Zillow and Trulia every now and then to find apartment listings, uh, two-bedroom, two-bathroom apartments here in Queens that were once sixteen hundred dollars in twenty seventeen, went up to two thousand dollars, uh, once the Amazon deal news was announced. Uh, and so like, uh, the idea was, uh, brought up on the news, right? Um, it was a huge jump in a matter of months and not usual. I noticed all this when I was in college writing a paper about this topic on the Amazon deals effect on housing or potential effect on housing. And according to a friend in government, uh, it was because of real estate speculation from folks owning property anticipating the Amazon deal to go through, leading them to increase the costs of rent in advance or buy more property to do just that. Uh, it would have been far worse all across New York City, not just for Queens, if the Amazon HQ deal went forward. Uh, you know, there's a hu, high demand for housing, especially for affordable housing, but there's a low supply for housing. And as we know, gentrification is real, and there are consequences to every decision. The casino only, uh, will continue this, uh, housing speculation if it moves forward, leading to greedy landlords as well as real estate moguls, uh, developers to increase rents, uh, all across New York City, uh, especially here in Queens. Uh, we need more true affordable housing, uh, yes, uh, but no casinos. Uh, with any new affordable housing being built, I would hope that at least eighty percent of the building uh, would be affordable housing, uh, ninety percent would be great even. Um, and I, I say true affordable housing because on New York City Housing Connect, which is a website for affordable housing, the listings there show rent uh, for some listings being over two thousand dollars, and they're falsely being advertised as affordable housing. These listings don't live up to its name of being affordable housing, and, um, I would say that if there is genuine intention to build more affordable housing, I hope it's for the right reasons to help folks struggling with the cost of living, including having to deal with the high rent costs and not for profits or to exploit the working class. We know that billionaires and those on their payroll don't care about the working class. The casino project is for them to get richer and for the billions, billionaires to have more control over New York City. Billionaires will prioritize on putting profits first, not people. Uh, these past few years, the rich have only gotten richer in twenty twenty, uh, even in twenty twenty during the pandemic, while the working class has been struggling with the cost of living all this time. We need to tax the rich so that they pay their fair share of taxes, uh, to help our communities. Uh, and by taxing the rich, we can get things like universal healthcare, free Q and E, and even more affordable housing the right way, not making business deals with billionaires. If billionaires say that a wealth tax will lead them to leave New York, it would be great if they did, um, but I'll call them on their bluff because there's no way they would really do that, because as we all know, there's no place in the world like New York, and, uh, they already have property here anyway. They're exploiting tenants, right? Uh, if they genuinely care enough about New York, they would get their share of taxes and, uh, fair share of taxes in a wealth tax. Um, and also, out of curiosity, I was looking into recent incidents with casinos in the past.
I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to, um, if we've given you. You're gonna, you can have one last, one last sentence, but we have to move on. We have eighty people like testifying. Oh, okay. Thank you for your testimony, and you could submit as well, uh, if you wish, if you, if you're still here, if you hear me. All right, we'll move on to the next person.
The next person is Sayida Dunston. In person.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Borough President, we appreciate the time. Clearly, you can tell how important we find this to be.
I know.
We've been here for three hours. Um, I'm the CEO of Elm Corps. The reason why I'm saying that is because we do life-saving work, and so the three hours that we're sitting here, it's really a clock really running for us. But this is important to us and to make sure that we're speaking. I'm here with Leila Bermuda. She's going to take most of the time, as I've spoken enough at many of these things, but just want to be on the record that we fully support the project. Um, also want to say that this project has already paid it forward in ways that people don't even recognize, because now people are talking to us about addiction. We've been talking about it for sixty years. Borough President, you know, we talk about mental health services. We talk about it ad nauseam. No one wants to hear. No one is caring and concerning. But this project and this casino is so big a deal that people who've been suffering for decades and been cared for by Elm Corps, and no one cared enough to ask us, now everyone's so concerned about addiction. And so I get the opportunities like this while people are talking about casinos to remind folks that black people are dying at five times the rate of overdose than anybody else in the city, but no one's talking about that. That there are, there are real issues that we address every day, and so the fact that we get to sit at the table to have this conversation is not fake. It is not unreal. We are not with, um, rose-colored glasses. We are the ones who push the envelope, not some days, all days. So Sully, who we love, cannot sit at the table with me without there being real conversation about how it helps our community. And so as we talk about gentrification and displacement, I've lived in the neighborhood for fifty years, and I want reparative justice for when white flight happened and disinvestment in my community. So if I could get some reinvestment back into my community, I'm all for it, because I had to live through decades of people not caring about it. So as we talk about Queens and what Queens represents, Leila, who works with me, we went to the same, um, elementary school, the same high school, and now we get to work in the same neighborhood where we both, um, were born and grew up. That's Queens, and that's how we know how to fight for what we fight for.
Hi, everyone. I'm Leila Bermudas. I'm the VP of Youth Services at Elm Corps. Um, obviously, this project is super important to us. On a personal note, as a person who works with young people for twenty-something years, the opportunity to have jobs for them, especially our young adults, eighteen to twenty-five, and work in their community would be extremely helpful. Having parkland for our families and having an oversaturation in the Parks Department to be able to rent fields so that we can have our softball teams that Elm Corps has, or having football teams, or having soccer teams, being able to have more fields. Um, on a very personal note, I am the mom of a child on the spectrum, and, um, one of the things that stands out to me about this project that there is a sensory park, and that's super important because I wish we had that when he was growing up. It gives an opportunity for families who also have children on the spectrum to have a support system within the park with other families, also to host birthday parties there, having equipment that addresses their sensory issues, having the ability for your child to feel included, to have social skills development, all of those wonderful things that sometimes we forget. Um, thank you. We totally support this program, and thank you again for letting me speak.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, and I do want to say for the dog whistling, too. Um, stop saying that black people who support this project have been bought and sold. Just, um, a newsflash, tone deafness. Do not continue to keep saying we've been bought and sold. Tone deaf. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, my next, the next person is Sidra Ahmad, in person.
Sandra.
Sidra Ahmad? Not, not present.
Not present.
Okay, next person is Mo Chan, also in person.
All right, here.
Good afternoon, uh, Mr. Borough President. Uh, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Mo Chan Lu, and I am, uh, serving on the Board of, uh, Community Board Four. And, uh, saying no is very easy. But saying no to a billion-dollar investment should not be easy. It can be easy. Um, so, uh, through, during COVID, uh, uh, myself and, uh, uh, some of our colleagues from my organization within the community, we provided, we were one of the first one providing funeral services, very much needed funeral services before, uh, the de Blasio administration started, because we were witnessing many bodies thrown into, uh, the Bronx soil. Um, and so we said, we gotta do something. So since then, uh, and, uh, I continue to work with, uh, community, uh, organizations, including uh, Queens Chamber of Commerce. And so with that, uh, we invited Grace Meng, uh, our Congresswoman Grace Meng, into the neighborhood to show her what we were in need of in the community. And so people were losing jobs, people were losing small businesses, uh, in addition to dying, obviously. Uh, and so I said two things, in the jobs, opportunities, um, small, actually three things, small business opportunities, and lastly, healthcare. So when I got a chance to go to three sixty room at the Citi Field, they, of course, Sally and the team showed us the great presentation, uh, after which, during the Q and A, I asked, of course, we have this twenty-three thousand jobs and so on and so forth, and also, uh, opportunities for some small businesses. But at the same time, healthcare is what we are in need of in Queens, and no one is taking in charge of improving healthcare in our borough. And with your leadership, you know, uh, we want to, uh, go forward and, and, and have a better healthcare in our communities that is very much in need of. And that is why I asked Sally, Sally, you know, can you help something with healthcare that we are in need of? Because this, this is what we witnessed during COVID. And right away, he responded about a hundred and sixty-three million dollars that you also mentioned, uh, Mr. Borough President, earlier. And so this is, this is very important for us. Um, and so, lastly, um, I was looking into how Vegas, Las Vegas, you know, the biggest, you know, casino community in the United States, how they are surviving, how they are thriving. And their homeless number is way less than New York City, even though our, you know, we have a bigger population. In terms of percentages, we are even greater. And so this, a billion-dollar project will give a lot of opportunities to lift all these, uh, people who are in need of jobs, opportunities. And with your leadership, in addition to other leadership within New York City, we can definitely improve from that aspect, you know, bringing the lives of all those homelessnessers as well, in addition to healthcare, which is very important. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So due to the number of speakers that we have on these items, we are going to be reducing the speaking time from three minutes to two minutes. I apologize for any inconvenience. You are more than welcome to submit written testimony to us at any point today. Uh, and I have my business card here if anyone would like my contact information. Uh, so Solo, go ahead and.
A minute, two-minute break.
Oh, a two-minute break. I'm sorry. So we're actually, okay, disregard what I just said. We're going to take a two-minute break, uh, bathroom break, whatever uh, you need. So yeah, feel free to stretch, and then we will resume calling, uh, testimony. Thank you. Okay, well luckily I have a copy of the list, so I can go ahead and call the next person. Oh, hi, Sola.
Yeah. We're ready to go.
The next person to speak is Joseph Datto.
They're on soon.
Yes, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon. I'm Joseph Datto, speaking to you from Jackson Heights today. I'm not affiliated with any organization. And thank you for the opportunity. Many of my neighbors weren't allowed to speak at the Community Board Three meeting on this topic. So I hope to be able to do them proud here for a few minutes. I had completely different remarks planned, but the, for the first time in my life, the words of a preacher moved my heart, as we heard earlier here today in public testimony. We heard some Old Testament stuff, so if you'll allow, I'd like to get a little Old Testament here with you as well. I mean this in all seriousness, a flood is coming. Flushing Meadows is sinking. And don't take my word for it. Go check with NASA and the satellite study that they did in New York City. At least while you still can under the federal government. Go check with USTA about the renovations to their stadium already in the area. We've heard plenty of fair weather numbers from the applicant team here. But if Mother Nature has other ideas about the future, the question did come up, who's gonna be holding the bag? And if no one answers that, I think we have to believe that means the people of Queens are holding the bag. And so I would ask you, please, do not support this project as it is currently submitted. And send a message to the applicant team that really they need to go home. They need to do their homework and they need to come back when they're serious about taking responsibility for the long-term future of Queens and Flushing Meadows. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony.
Sola, you can continue to call names. Thank you.
Okay, the next name is Xavier Carrero, in person.
Xavier Carrero.
Not present.
Okay, William Kramer.
Present.
Everybody's tired, including me. My name is William Kramer. I've been an organizer all my life. I'm fifty-six years old. I'm a resident of Astoria, Queens. Been working here for six, eight months. I'm currently unemployed. I could show my BT card. But, you know, it makes me sad to hear this, to attend this thing today, to quote my late mom who left me money and I'm starting a community organization, you know, I don't know if it'll laugh or cry. But, you know, I lived in Massachusetts for seven years. I worked as a recovery coach near Boston Medical Center. I've done research. I will share it with the group. We only have a minute, so she's supposed to raise her hand when I'm done with my minute. But, you know, I wanna have a moment of silence for the victims of fentanyl. Because in Massachusetts, the connection between gambling addiction and fentanyl addiction is very there's lots of evidence on it and I will share information on that. And there's growing body of evidence on that. So without corning studies, it's sad to me as a resident of Astoria that we're talking about putting a park next to a casino with the kind of vice that comes with that. You know, I've also been, you know, I've reported on sex trafficking. I've seen near areas like this. I have a lot of direct lived experience. My college roommate died of a heroin overdose. I went to Yale. I've been a union organizer. I've done a lot of things. I think it's something that nobody's paying attention to. Gambling addiction is one thing, but it feeds other forms of addiction. I spent six or seven years listening to people talk their, tell their stories and recovery, as a recovery coach in recovery meetings with addicts. It's an elephant in the room that I'm surprised nobody's talking about. Gambling addiction is one thing, fentanyl is another thing. So I would like to have a moment of silence for all the victims of fentanyl in this country that have died because of that kind of addiction, because of what it's led to in communities. So I'd like everybody, anybody that feels that, the pain of addiction and the pain having known people that have died from fentanyl addiction, I would like to humbly give up my extra minute for a moment of silence of victims of the fentanyl epidemic, because I know this will increase use of fentanyl in this area, period. Thank you for your time. I'll submit written testimony with some of the evidence. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony.
All right, the next person is Jorge Morales Flores, in person.
Not present.
Okay. Antoine Wallace, in person.
Antoine Wallace? No.
Okay. Yasmin, Yasmin B, in person.
Not present.
Okay. Bliss Butrago, on Zoom.
Here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Bliss Butrago. I am a lifelong Queens resident. I grew up in Jamaica, Queens, close to the other casino that we currently have, but I currently live in Flushing. I sadly had to witness firsthand what the resort world, you know, did to my community and my neighbors. And it was really disheartening to see. We've talked and it's come up a lot about addiction and gambling. And I think what has been prefaced is managing the addiction once it already exists. But I think something we're not talking about is the fact that having this close proximity in communities of color will increase more addiction. And that is extremely important and I think should be something that is important for our president. And I wanna comment just in general about, we all agree that the parkland shouldn't be a parking lot. And I think the fact that we can all agree on that says a lot, but where we differs how the land should be used. And for me, using public land to be given to a single individual for the sole purpose of building massive business development to line their pockets, of which the community would be getting absolute breadcrumbs out of over the years of this in youth is just really disheartening. This doesn't sound like public land being used for the public and it's a gross misuse of our public land and honestly does not feel aligned with what your constituents are asking for. It's frustrating to see Mike Cohen, who is not one of your constituents. He has multiple mega mansions across the US in Florida, Connecticut, and Manhattan. But your constituents are here and we're asking for you to recognize that people are having a hard time making ends meet. People are having a hard time affording their rent, which has been mentioned before. And yes, this would bring jobs, but to what cost? And I think when you're making this decision, I really hope you take to heart the few benefits that may come out of this project versus what our communities would lose in return. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
All right, next person is is Avram Cohen? In person?
Not.
Not here.
Okay. Next person is the Eighty-Ninth Street tenants, in person.
Eighty-Ninth tenants, not here.
Okay. Scott Kaplan, on Zoom. I'm with yourself, Scott.
I think I just did. Did I?
Okay, yes, yes, you did.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Borough President. I appreciate the opportunity to testify briefly. I am a resident of Queens, Long Island City in particular, and I appreciate, I'm speaking in support of this proposal. I appreciate the opportunity to use the seven chain to get to Flushing. Very easy and it sounds like a lot of fun. I support the alienation of this parking lot. Very easy, and it sounds like a lot of fun. I believe, I support the alienation of this uh, parking lot. The use of uh, this space as part of this entertainment complex to consist of both baseball, tennis, and soccer and parkland is an amazing idea. Also, for those who oppose uh, uh, gambling and casinos, I submit that this should be an individual choice and not dictated to by uh, um, the handful of elected officials who believe that they have the right to decide uh, whether or not their constituents should be allowed to gamble. Um, to conclude, I, I just would like to submit that this is a much uh, an exciting idea for Flushing and for Queens and for the city of New York. And the parkland in particular is an imaginative uh, idea which will make life better for New Yorkers. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony.
All right, next person is Yassalyn Estrella.
When I started this, good afternoon. Just Selena Estrella, and I'm the executive director of the tiny but mighty Neighborhood Housing Services. We have been in the community for thirty years, providing the tools for low to moderate income to be able to stay and keep their home and creating generational wealth for our communities, especially our communities of color. We have talked about this project and have, you can see how diverse and how, when was the last time in my twenty years of land use and in this community, I have never seen so many people be able to speak about a project that is not just in a vacuum. This is our project because this has been part of the engagement. This has been part of the conversations. And with Metropolitan Park, we are supporting this because it's our collective vision. We have seen in our, our organization, day in and day out, the struggles that our community face when it comes to housing. But I have to say, housing, in addressing housings, we also need to address other issues such as jobs. Adequate jobs bring adequate housing. And we need this and for our communities. We also need uh, to vision and economic development that is inclusive of very diverse communities that are surrounding. And for this, we are in support. Right now, we have in the community, we have an empty lot and a housing crisis, idling and doing nothing about it and rejecting a well-planned to create Metropolitan Park is totally a disservice and a disrespect to the same communities that we have been front and center of creating this vision. We cannot shy away from development and deprive ourselves from this innovative opportunity to create wealth for here and for the people and our neighbors that includes the conditions for homeownership, which is the cornerstone of the very essence of what we do at NHS of Queens and what we do. So let's support this plan and let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
All right, next person is Rafael Herrera in person?
Rafael Herrera.
Not present.
Okay, um, Franklin Alcapiña in on.
On Zoom, Franklin.
On Zoom, Solo?
Yes, I'm, I'm on Zoom. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Borough President for your time. Thank you, fellow neighbors of Queens. My name is Franklin Alcapiña. I'm a resident of Jackson Heights, born and raised, as well as a public health graduate student. I've read this proposal and I see the significant benefits it will offer. I think they're all great. However, I want to remind everyone again that this will only happen if Mr. Cohen and his team win their bid for a state casino license. As you all know, there has been a war in New York, in New York City uh, for these licenses. There is one, uh, to my knowledge, one license that is being, uh, you know, uh, folks have been trying to get in Hudson Yards, in Coney Island. Um, I'm a researcher. I've worked very closely with local residents in Corona specifically. We're very close to this, where this casino will be built. Um, the folks that I've worked with know that, uh, fear that this casino would displace them through increased rent, uh, traffic congestion, crime, gambling addiction, and climate impact. Um, similar bids, like I mentioned, um, are losing ground due to community pushback. And I'm particularly worried about how sustainable these benefits will be for community members, especially if the casino fails to succeed as anticipated. Uh, research studies in the past have shown that casinos are often built in urban working-class areas. They promise economic growth, community investment, but oftentimes fail to sustain these. And a lot of local community groups share these worries. Um, to my knowledge, the Ming Quan Community Center has raised concerns about further exploitation of Flushing's Asian-American residents. And the Guardians of Flushing Bay worry that the casino might not account for environmental justice concerns, which of course I know is not going to be something that's going to be addressed by every single thing or development in our community, but it's just an actual problem that needs to be held front and center. And I'm, all of us can agree that communities want to thrive. We want our communities to thrive. We want our neighborhoods. We want Queens to be successful. Um, but we should be skeptical of the promises made by billionaires. And to ensure Queens' future is truly in rest in our communities, if they fail to secure the bid and the license, I believe we need clear accountability measures. State Senator Jessica Ramos and many residents like myself are still skeptical, but if the casino happens to become a reality, we need to be able to end any potential harm it should result. If the project doesn't deliver on its promises or disrupts our way of life, we need a reversion clause in any parkland alienation bill to hold Metropolitan Park accountable, revoke its casino license, thus reverting this land back to public parkland. I urge us to engage constructively with Metropolitan Park while securing safeguards for our community's future. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your testimony.
All right, next person is Patrick Young in person?
He went, he went already.
Okay, um, Ari Espino in person?
I didn't even give a speech. Wow, this is great. Um, you clap again. Well, good afternoon, Borough President, and most of you that are left here. Um, I'm Ari Espinal, former Assembly Member, District Leader, and a Local Seventy-Nine Union member, but most importantly, Corona resident. Calling Corona my home has been the biggest flex in my life. It's my neighborhood. Like most of you, I've known the needs and wants of Corona. We are proud members of the community, but we have a lot more to do. And Metropolitan Park and developing Metropolitan Park in Corona is what we need. We have a chance to invest and build and put people to work who live and invest in the neighborhood. Quite often, we're forgotten and we have a chance to build in our community, to build a space that we could call ours, a park, a complex that we could enjoy, not just for those individuals that come and visit in August for the US Open. I grew up in a union's household. Labor is an extended family of mine. I have an opportunity to leave the community that I've served, lived, and grew up, but I choose not to. I want to invest in the community that raised me, and I want a project like this that we could see and involve for the rest of our future. I strongly support Metropolitan Park because I'm also speaking behalf of my union, ten thousand plus brothers and sister of local labor, local, local Seventy-Nine, who live in this around the area. We have a chance to construct and be proud of historic development in Corona, Queens, and the Valley of Ashes. Thank you and happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Thank you for your testimony. Good to see you.
All right, next person is Helen Artego in person?
She's not here.
Okay, um, Olga Reyes on.
On Zoom?
Yes.
Reyes.
Hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, um, for having us here and allowing us to talk. My name is Olga Reyes, and I'm a resident of Corona. I have heard the opposition arguments multiple times, and while their vision may align to the Metropolitan Park in concept, there's significant indifference that they lack, the funding that they make their project a reality. Instead, they continue to place blame on the comments. However, Metropolitan Park has repeatedly clarified that the, that the current challenges stem from the actions of abrimoses, not their own. Penalizing them, penalizing Metropolitan Park for stepping up to address these issues is unjust. The opposition has also overlooked how critical facts. The park in question is under the lease of eighty-nine years. How can Phoenix Meadows realistically propose a project that they don't control? As a member of this community, I want to see the positive change, and I'm tired of the dark parking lot that we have in our, in, in our nearby neighborhood. Actually, I'm very, um, close to the parking lot itself. I ambition something big and beautiful that benefits everyone. This project will be much-needed jobs to our community, provide families with safety childcare options, which is my major, um, you know, I guess, point for this. Provide families with safe childcare options and allow parents to work close to home, which again, as a mom, that's one of my biggest perks. I shorter, a shorter commute means more quality time with their children. Queens deserves progress and families deserve opportunities for a love, for a better quality in life. Let's support this vision that prioritize, uh, prioritize, I'm sorry, our community and needs of the future of Queens. Thank you.
For your testimony.
All right, next person is Donovan Finn in person?
Not present.
Okay, um, John Albert in person?
Not here.
Okay, um, Darren Meanan, that's on.
Darren, one two.
That's me.
Okay, good afternoon.
Thanks for having me. Yeah, yeah, I heard a Daniel Meehan earlier. I think that was me, but it's okay. Anyway, so uh, my name is Darren Meanan.
Kaplan, uh, Solo as well, because he keeps popping up.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Scott Kaplan already spoke.
Yes, yeah, he spoke, but mute him if we can, or.
Am I good to go?
Yes, you're good to go.
Okay. All right, my name is Darren Meanan. I'm not only the founder of the Severline Army, not to be, not to be confused with the train line. It's the largest Mets fan group. Uh, we travel to, to games on the road, but also go to a lot of games at Citi Field. If you've ever seen the solid group of orange people in the outfield, that's us. Uh, like many of you, I've spent countless hours at Citi Field and Shea Stadium uh, back in the day. I've been to every single ballpark except for four so far. And I heard that fan earlier, uh, Nico say that, you know, he, he loved playing catch with his son down in Atlanta. And unfortunately, we don't have anything like that and never have anything like that uh, outside of Citi Field or Shea Stadium. So obviously, I'm here to speak in support of Metropolitan Park. Uh, for decades, the area that surrounds City and Shea has been nothing but parking lots, and that sea of asphalt really does nothing to serve the fans besides uh, parking their cars or tailgating, and uh, certainly does nothing for the surrounding areas uh, in Queens. But with Metropolitan Park, we have a monumental opportunity right in front of us to change that. And um, imagine coming to the game and before and after actually having something to do, whether, you know, play in the park or go to the, the Hard Rock Hotel, grab a bite to eat at the Queens Food Hall, which I heard Sully uh, talk about. Uh, you know, however many hours ago now about uh, featuring all the local vendors. And uh, I've been to a bunch of listening ser, listening uh, meetings and uh, obviously, I've been a part of, or trying to be a part of this process as much as I can, just to support it and, and um, be a part of the community. But you know, unfortunately, my daughter is not into baseball, and as a lifelong Mets fan and a guy who really, you know, every day I'm, I'm somewhat involved in the Mets, uh, to have a daughter who's not really into baseball is, is sad for me, but she would be probably if there was more things to do around the ballpark. And uh, I'm also a cheer dad, so it pains me to say that we have to actually leave New York to go to these competitions, one being in Mohegan Sun. So I think it was Sully earlier that mentioned not only would the, the facility be used for obviously entertainment purposes and having in, you know, large concerts and things like that, but dance recitals or uh, you know, cheer competitions and things like that would obviously be great to do in our own backyard instead of leaving, leaving Queens. So uh, this eight billion dollar investment will do more than just transform the Citi Field experience. It'll bring, obviously, which we've heard, twenty-three thousand good-paying jobs, which I also heard Sully say, I think it's a great idea that if you're a Queens resident, you get first crack at that job, which is exactly what we want to hear. Uh, pri, prioritize the local hiring in supporting not only minorities but women-owned businesses. Uh, there's a lot of opportunities right here for Queens families.
Thank you.
We're out of time. Thank you.
Oh, man, sorry.
What do you think of Juan Soto? Maybe that's the last question.
Well, we just lost Severino and uh, you know, he got a big bag out there.
I just want, I wanted Sully to hear that.
But anyway, one, one more thing I gotta say.
Sully today instead of him lobbying us.
One thing I want to say before, before uh, before I leave. You know, after hearing all the facts here, the environmental impact, the commitments from the project to uh, the local communities, I find it hard to believe that anyone that could weigh all of these factors and say no to this, it's, it's really hard to understand. Uh, we have a big opportunity right in front of us.
We love Juan Soto, but we gotta let you go.
We really need this to happen. So thank you guys for your time and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bye.
All right, and the next name is Avram Cohen? In person?
Not here.
Not present.
Okay, next person is Nestor Pastor in, I mean, in person, yeah.
Not present.
Okay, um, Nualla Navajo in person?
Not present.
Okay, um, Alexis Caloyanires? That's in person?
Not present.
Okay, um, Sean Cathrey? In person?
Not, not present.
Um, Zeke Luga? In person?
Not present.
All right, and um, Yassalyn Akahwak? Not present?
Not present.
All right, and I think that's.
Anybody in person who wishes to speak?
Yeah, I actually, I have um, uh, the list of folks who came, uh, so I'll just quickly call the names. Uh, Chandra Gomez. Thank you for your patience, everyone. Appreciate it.
This is the way public hearings go for those who don't attend them. Plan, plan your day.
Okay, um, good afternoon, everyone. Um, my name is uh, Chandra Gomez. I'm a lifelong Flushing resident. And I just want to say, although I live in Flushing, no one came to my door, no one emailed me, no one called me. I didn't get any kind of contact from anyone about this to solicit my opinion or anyone from my neighborhood about whether we liked it or we didn't like it or what our, I, as what our ideas were. Um, I'm, I, I'm a lifelong union member. My father was a union member, and I understand how important jobs are. I retired after working for a nonprofit for thirty-five years. Um, but I'd just like to call everyone's attention to Joni Mitchell's song. Uh, they put up a parking, they paved paradise and here to put up a casino. Um, I mean, what we're going to get out of this is, from what I hear, a casino, a hotel, and an underground garage, and a food court. Those my, those things don't sound to me like the investment that they're worth to give a public parkland. Uh, I, I actually had a meeting to go to that I was going to leave at twelve-thirty, but there were so few people speaking on behalf of our parkland that I felt I had to stay and ask you. Uh, you are the trustee of our parkland. Once we give it away, we can never get it back. And um, this is not just for the people in this room. It's, it's for our children. And although people have said, well, it's just a parking lot now. Well, okay, well, you know, with the city or, you know, Mr. Cohen who owns the Met Team, he could do something with the parking lot as it is right now. He has billions of dollars. This other lady said, well, you know, you don't have to do this on our parkland. You could buy some property right outside the park and build your, your hotel and your other things. You know, the other thing is people are going to drive here. They need to park their cars and, and you're going to build an underground parking lot? I mean, I have some, 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 um, knowledge about swampland. You can't build an extensive underground garage in a swamp. Uh, I mean, you're going to start to do it and, and it's going to turn out that you can't do it. So I, I would just ask you, parkland is sacred land. We can't, cannot get it back. Please don't do this.
Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, the next person, and apologies for the name pronunciation. I am not the best. Uh, Aicha Bamba? Okay, not present. Uh, Chanel Thomas Henry. Thank you for your patience.
Good afternoon, Borough President. Um, thank you for allowing me to speak. Um, so I'm kind of the trifecta. I live here, I work here, and I serve the community here. And when I say here, Corona East Elmhurst, which is directly adjacent to this project. So I know a lot of people spoke about they live in Queens. We live in Queens, right next door. And although, no disrespect to. And although, no disrespect to anyone, although I loved going to Citi Field when it was Shea Stadium and going to the carnival in the parking lot, and Quinn and Parker loved going there a couple of months ago for the World Great American Bounce. I would love to take my children there year round, to actually play in a park for the first time in history. I am a third generation Corona East Elmhurst resident, and I'm raising the fourth generation of residents here and want to see something better for not just my children, but the children throughout our community. I've had the opportunity to work in my community, making sure to bring economic benefits through the LaGuardia Outreach Program. And oftentimes, when developments come into an area, they give us lip service about jobs, opportunities to small businesses. But what I can say about the team at Metropolitan Park is, they came years ago and spoke to numerous individuals from big, large, and small developments to see how to do it right. They spoke with us about what happened at LaGuardia and what could be done better in the future to make sure we get jobs. So when you say how you guarantee these jobs, they're going to open career centers in our community where people can walk in and actually apply for a job and not just be a number out of thousands who apply online. Will have someone to speak to so that they can work where they live. I've had the honor of serving my community as a board member of Elcor NHS and Community Board Three. And Borough President, you even mentioned, I've been on the board for twelve years. I've never seen boards, community boards, collectively agree to support a project. So for us not to support it, what does that say? Metropolitan Park has created a blueprint for how development should be done in communities, especially communities of color, where they engage us, listen to us, and allow us to participate in the process. So let's just be a precedent of how development should happen, and I absolutely positively agree with this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, the last person that I have that has signed in that is looking to speak is Harold Wilmer Kramer. And he does not appear to be present, so now I will open the floor to anyone that we have not called that is still here, in person or in Zoom. Do we have any folks on?
Yeah, there's no one else on Zoom that's left to speak.
Okay, Omar's telling me some folks have raised their hands that?
Yeah, hold me. I'll call Jose Tejada.
Okay.
Jose Tejada, okay.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so I've been connected for the past four hours and waiting for my turn to speak. Okay, that's not a big deal, you know?
We caught you. You missed your, you missed your train.
No, no, I understand, but, you know, I just wanted to say that, you know, I've been connected, you know, for the past four hours, you know? But it's not a big deal, you know, compared to the forty years.
I've been sitting here four hours.
I, yes, exactly, exactly.
All right.
You know, so, you know, it doesn't bother me, you know, of course, it doesn't bother you, you know, since we have been waiting for a project of this magnitude to be presented for the past forty years. So I just want to start with that, and, you know, good afternoon to the Borough President and everyone. My name is Jose Tejada, Secretary Director of the Dominican Commerce Society of Queens. I'm in full support since the very first time the project was presented to me. Since I saw it, and I still see it as a win-win for all. This project will create dozens of jobs, economic benefit to our great borough of Queens. This project will also improve the quality of life in our community, especially for neighborhoods like Flushing, Corona, East Elmhurst, where more public spaces for family and children are needed. The community investment fund reflect the input from local voices gathered throughout extensive workshops and consultations, showing these plans is not just for Queens, by Queens. Many of the NAC mention that supporter of a Metropolitan Park project does not care about the community. For the record, organizations will be providing educational social services to the most vulnerable low income family member for the past thirty years. During the COVID nineteen pandemic, we were given hardest to continue to provide those individuals that were in need of various services that were only available online and not capable of technology efficiency. That's envision Metropolitan Park as more than a development. It is a new model for public and private policy working together to build something for everyone. As Queens continue to grow, projects like the Metropolitan Park ensure a neighborhood, keep families here and address environmental issue. We all know that minutes of travel arrive above J K and LaGuardia Airport, but do not stay in Queen because of lack of any that had both entertaining and well-known hotel at the same site. As for the NAC, please know that this is a project that will benefit, continue to benefit nested generation in our future community residents as well. Haven't they learned that just like Amazon, Barclays Center, there won't be a second chance to bring back the thousands of jail losses by those that won't even provide a better price solution? Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, and were there any other?
There's one more person, yes, Cody Herman?
Hey, thanks. So hi Donovan, I'll be sending written comments as well, but I don't support this project. And I really want to emphasize that while the development team has paid a lot of money for their engagement plan, it's so obviously rigged to get the answers they wanted. And I know this in part because this is the type of organizing and urban design that I studied in school. You know, I've had professors that say to me, never ask a question that you don't already know the answer to. And that's the type of ethos that, you know, modern day engagement is completed under. I don't want you to think that the people of Queens have really been heard because they haven't, and that's by design. Like the door knocking campaign they did, they never mentioned a casino to those people. And similarly, you know, I said on Community Board Seven, and my comments were silenced repeatedly in land use committee meetings and public hearings, and the Chair and Co-Chair of the Board literally yelled at me and cut me off because they didn't like the questions that I was asking about the project. And unfortunately, this bullying is not the worst we've seen. Community Board Four postponed their meeting due to threats and harassment and intimidation tactics by the development team. Similarly, have you seen anyone from Parks Department speak in favor of this project? These instances don't seem like the conditions that really foster honest and open engagement now or in the future. I wonder, do you remember, we went on that walk together through Flushing Meadows one time? And you told me yesterday's price is not today's price. The benefits package was released in February nearly a year ago. To be honest, it sounds like yesterday's price to me. The one hundred sixty-three million dollars is for over thirty years, or for thirty years, and, you know, presumably split between six community boards. That's about five million per year per neighborhood district. Does that really feel like enough to offset the attractive nature of a casino? At Community Board Seven, we found out that Sully promised a dragon boat team that they would redo Pier One at the World's Fair Marina. You know, that could be a hundred million dollar project easily. Does that leave just sixty-three million dollars over thirty years for the remaining impacted communities? They're making all these random promises to people everywhere with nothing in writing, like a sensory park sited under the loud seven train and the flight paths from LaGuardia. Do you really trust this? Does this really make sense? And confusingly, the DEIS does not tell us anything about which communities will be most impacted or address displacement in a meaningful way. How can we know what communities and how can we know where commercial and residential displacement will take place? If the area studied was actually just primarily a swath of Flushing Bay, with only about four blocks in Corona being studied in the DEIS for displacement. The DEIS also doesn't consider any of the Willetts Point buildout. You know, it's like this type of wealth injected into an area that causes displacement. It's not poverty that causes people to move. Again, this is kind of like a rigged system with rigged results. And I know you're the candidate of choice for Claire Shovel-in-the-Ground Showman, who really led the charge for development over these hundred fifty acres in downtown Flushing and Willetts Point and Flushing Creek. And I think, you know, maybe it's really time to reevaluate the price that we are paying ecologically and in our health for generations to come. Beyond the health impacts of gambling, you know, without the FEIS, we don't know the full impacts of stormwater on the project. We know the flow rates are going over two percent, but we have no details about that mitigation to Flushing Bay. They're doubling the parking spots, doubling the amount of cars, and mostly doubling air pollution in areas that are already in the ninetieth and above percentile nationwide for diesel particulate matter and traffic proximity.
Thank you, Cody. All right, your time is up. Thank you.
All righty, have we heard everyone? Well, I want to thank everybody. Are we good, Sola? Want to thank everybody, no matter which side you're on, this is what democracy looks like. We've heard from everyone and look forward to certainly issuing our remarks and anybody who knows how we operate here, just as we drove a strong Willetts Point deal, we will do it with any deals that we do. And of course, there will be teeth and reporting mechanisms and whatever avenues we certainly pursue. I'm not new to this. I've been doing this a long time. But let me say just thank you to everybody who attended. I look forward to, once again, reviewing all of the written testimony and coming up with a sound, God willing, solution that everyone could live with. But if not, we're chosen to be the leader of this borough, and we're going to make sure we leave it certainly better than we found it. So I want to thank everybody who testified today, and I want you to know that we've heard everybody today. And I think both sides had some good sound solutions that perhaps we can entertain in some of the recommendation as well as we move forward. With that being said, thank you all for coming out, and we'll see you at our next land use hearing, oh, in the new year.
The next one's actually December nineteenth.
All right, I thought I got away from, sorry. See, they work me so hard here. With that being said, see you December nineteenth at nine-thirty. And please have a blessed week. Thank you.
Thank you. This hearing is now closed.